Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Sandra Merman. Representing District Two, Victor Christ. Representing District Three, Les Miller. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing Countywide District Five, Ken Hagan. Representing Countywide District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing Countywide District Seven, Al Higginbotham. The county administrator is Mike Merrill. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to our Board of County Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, June 20th. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and our prayer by Commissioner Les Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our gracious and heavenly Father, we are so thankful that you allow us to see another one of your beautiful days, a day that we'll never see again. We hope that, Father, we can do the right thing to make this day a day in Hillsborough County that we can make sure that all people, regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, or economic advantages or disadvantages, that we can make their lives much better. Father, we ask that you be with those that put their lives on the line for us each and every day, those in military uniforms that serve on this soil or foreign soil, our first responders who put their lives on the line for us each and every day. Father, we pray for peace and harmony in this country. It may seem like there's a discord at this particular point in time. We know that you can put your healing arms around it and make everything smooth and take these mountains and make molehills out of them. And, Father, when we finish our work at the end of this day, we ask you to take us back to our homes and find everything safe and sound. These are all blessed, we ask you in your righteous and holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Miller. And I also would like to extend a prayer for the children being separated from their parents at the border. We do know that Commissioner Christ and Commissioner White are somewhat detained in traffic, so they will be here shortly. We're going to start, we do have two presentations today. We're going to start with Commissioner Kemp, who will declare June 2018 as LGBT Pride Month.
I'd like to call up many people here that are going to join to accept this proclamation. And thank you all so much for coming here. Carrie West, President of Tampa Pride and his partner, Mark Bias. Carrie had contacted us yesterday. He's had a death in his family, so he won't be here. But, sorry to say that, but I wanted to recognize him at any rate. Mark Biskarich, Equality Florida. Sally Phillips, former Chair of the Local and State LGBT Democratic Caucus. Kelly Flannery, the South Tampa Chamber President and CEO. You can come right up here. The Reverend Jacob Harosha, from the Metropolitan Community Church. Terry Wolf, former Chair of the Hillsborough County Human Relations Board. John and Nancy Desmond, have PFLAG, Parents and Friends of Lesbian and Gays, and Tampa Pride. Thank you. Ashley Brundage, yes, I didn't, yeah, I didn't see her here, Representative of the Tampa Bay Diversity Chamber of Commerce, she may be caught in traffic. And anyone else who would like to join us up here that's here as part of this? Thank you so much. So, and this is, we want to thank you all for all your work in the community that you've done to make this a loving community and a prosperous, a prosperous place for our future. Whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender LGBT Pride Month is celebrated nationwide each year in June, and whereas this month was chosen to commemorate the uprising that took place at the Stonewall Inn in Manhattan, New York, the morning of June 28, 1969, often viewed as a birth of the modern LGBT rights movement, and whereas it's important during this month to take time to reflect on the LGBT rights movement, and whereas it is fitting that several major United States Supreme Court decisions impacting LGBT rights in a positive way have been announced in June, including Lawrence versus Texas in 2003, US versus Windsor in 2013, Obergefell versus Hodges in 2015, and Pavan versus Smith in 2017. And whereas despite this extraordinary progress, LGBT Americans still face discrimination simply for being who they are, and whereas in Hillsborough County stands with the LGBT community in the struggle to ensure equal treatment for all and to defend and advocate for LGBT rights as human beings. And whereas after June 12, 2016, mass shootings at Paltz, an Orlando nightclub, communities throughout the nation came together to honor the victims of the tragedy, which included 49 people who were killed and 53 others that were wounded. And whereas Hillsborough County will continue to be a county where all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, are treated with dignity and respect, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare June 2018 as LGBT Pride Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists and recognize and respect those who are dedicated to providing a safe and inclusive community in Hillsborough County. We had someone who is not here, I'm sure caught in traffic, to accept it, but I'm just wondering, Sally, would you like to speak for a minute or two? I'm putting you on the spot here, or just a minute?
Sure, sure. Well, first of all, thank you, Commissioner Kemp. This is, it's very, very important that this is honored. We feel that June is certainly a month that we all celebrate, and of course, with Tampa Pride, Tampa Pride is in March, so we're celebrating, you know, like all year round. But we appreciate that very, very much, and we feel very honored. So, thank you.
And what we'll do is step back here and take a picture?
And Commissioner Kemp, if you want to stay down there, you can, it's for Tampa Bay Water.
Oh, okay.
Good. And I'll ask Matt Jordan, he's the CEO for Tampa Bay Water, to come forward. As you know, Tampa Bay Water, and I thought we were going to have a long board meeting today, and then so many things got deferred, I wish we had the video. But we will show that another time. But the video of the history of Tampa Bay Water, they are celebrating their 20th anniversary, and that was back on June 10, 1998. Local leaders came together, they signed the documents, then with Governor Lotton Childs. I was actually in the legislature and attended that signing, and the legislation created Tampa Bay Water. The region faced serious water supply challenges 20 years ago, but thanks to leadership, forward thinking, and spirit of regionalism of our local governments, our region now enjoys a reliable, safe, environmentally sustainable drinking water supply. I was there for this landmark moment in history 20 years ago. I'm proud to be able to recognize this milestone along with my fellow board members as we continue the important work. Commissioner Kemp is, and I both serve as representatives of the Board of County Commissioners for Hillsborough County on that board. Two decades after its creation, Tampa Bay Water still successfully operates a diverse, reliable, and resilient water supply network built to sustain the needs of this region for future generations. It manages a water supply portfolio that has enabled environmental recovery, provides affordable, high-quality drinking water to the residents and businesses of Tampa Bay through its members, and maintains a cooperative process among the members and the community. So, is with those remarks, I give you a heartfelt thank you, and I'll read this commendation to you into the record. Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to congratulate Tampa Bay Water on the occasion of its 20th anniversary and recognizes the organization for providing sustainable drinking water to the region. Since 1998, Tampa Bay Water has dedicated itself to safeguarding the Tampa Bay region's water resources, meeting or surpassing all local, state, and federal drinking water standards. The utility created the region's first master water plan, which diversified its supply to include groundwater, river water, and the nation's first large-scale seawater desalination plant. In 2005, Tampa Bay Water began using the CWB billion regional reservoir, which stores up to 15.5 billion gallons of water for use during the dry season. In recognition of its efforts, the agency was awarded the American Metropolitan Water Association's 2017 Platinum Award for Utility Excellence. These efforts illustrate Tampa Bay Water's unwavering commitment to protecting the region's natural resources while providing drinking water to its customers. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Tampa Bay Water for its stewardship over 26 years and applaud its dedication to providing water to this region, and signed by all seven county commissioners. I'll present that to you and ask you if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and very much appreciate this recognition. As Chairman Merman said, she's been involved since 1998, first in Tallahassee, and currently serves as our Board Chair. In 1998, when the interlocal agreement was first signed by all the member governments and all those involved, it was a charge given to the newly-created utility of Tampa Bay Water to go forth and build a true regional system. And that is precisely what we have today. And over these 20 years of investing over $1 billion of funds to build infrastructure that does and will serve this region for decades to come, and we've had a lot of partners at the federal and state level that's helped us to do this, but primarily it's the partnership that we have enjoyed and continue to enjoy with our member governments, as Hillsborough County and the other five member governments, that have really created this very robust regional system. I would like to say that last year, 2017, we were really tested. We had an extended dry period, and as I understand it, it was the longest and most severe dry period that we've experienced in the region in over 100 years. And with our reservoir, with our desalination plant, and the other infrastructure that we built precisely for that reason, to be able to get through those times, we were successful. So, we've been tested, and we have shown that we have and continue to support the region, and as we are planning, there's our master water plan, continuing to plan for the future, to make certain that we always not only have a sustainable water supply and a sustainable environment, but that we're planning for the future to make sure that we always fulfill our commitment to this region. And we do very much appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. So, let's take your plaque, and we'll go up here and we'll take the picture.
Yes, Commissioners, we have one off the agenda, item F4, which was, which is to receive an update on Children's Services. That's Commissioner Merman's item. We have three deferrals. One of the deferrals was a commendation recognizing the Jefferson High School varsity baseball team. That was deleted. A12 is a resolution relating to the county's vehicle for hire ordinance that's being deferred to July 18. F2 was a presentation by Jeff Seward, interim CEO of HART. That was Commissioner Kemp's item, being deferred to a date to be determined. We have one revision or correction to the agenda, that's item G1, which is an overview of aging services, funding, and services. At the request of Commissioner Kemp, that was moved to consent. No items removed from consent for any reason. We have some time certens for public hearings. Beginning at 10:00 AM, the first item, D1, is to consider a post-disaster debris ordinance, establishing the county's authority to access private roads and private right-of-ways during emergencies to eliminate any threat to the public safety, health, and welfare. Second public hearing, D2, is to consider enactment of an ordinance pertaining to the regulation of trespass towing. Public hearing, D3, is to consider an adoption of an ordinance to amend the county charter to require that amendments to charter be effective upon approval by 60% vote of the electors. Public hearing, D4, is to consider adoption of an ordinance to amend the county's charter, requiring that elections of the five constitutional officers be conducted on a nonpartisan basis. Final public hearing, D5, is to consider adoption of an ordinance to implement a requirement in the charter to require a financial impact statement for all proposed charter amendments. 10:30 is item B3, that's to accept the Jan. K. Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition Protection Program Audit Report. 10:45 is your board appointments, that's item F1. 10:45, oh, companion.
You're taking both the Workforce Alliance and the appointments at the same time.
Right. And 11:00 AM, B12 is the proposed approval of the seventh modification to the Tampa Bay Passenger Ferry Interim Public-Privet Partnership Agreement. 11:15, G2, is a joint report from the county administrator and county attorney regarding whether the county is able to pursue criminal charges against persons using the county logo in deceptive advertising. Final time certain is F3, and that's a presentation from St. Pete Mayor Rick Kreisman regarding the Tampa Bay Ferry Demonstration Project for this season, and that was placed on the agenda by Commissioner Merman. Those are the changes.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I motion to approve changes? Motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. Without further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried 6 to 0.
Okay, thank you all. We're now going to move to the public comment portion of the meeting. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the Board that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the board members and the public. The Board is set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. People wishing to speak before the Board during the public comment portion of the meeting should complete the electronic request for public comment form located in the lobby just outside the boardroom. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. And when addressing the Board, please state your name, speak clearly into the microphone, and three minutes will be allowed for each speaker. And our first speaker for on-the-agenda items is Charles Lee. And after Charles, it will be Douglas Denis. Good morning, Charles.
Madam Chair, and members of the Commission, Charles Lee, Director of Advocacy of Audubon, Florida. I'm here to speak this morning with regard to item number B12, which you'll be having at 11:00 AM, involving the seventh modification to the Tampa Bay Passenger Ferry Interim Private Partnership Agreement. This item proposes that the taxpayers of Hillsborough County spend an additional $170,000 in the direction of analyzing the viability of a ferry service from the eastern part of the shoreline of the bay to the McHale Air Force Base. The reason that I am here is we have read this agreement, and we are quite concerned that the context of the agreement continues to contemplate the concept that lands at the Schultz Preserve site, which are owned in totality by the Southwest Florida Water Management District, which are conservation lands that were acquired through partnership with Hillsborough County, but nonetheless owned entirely by the district, will somehow be available for the purpose of a ferry terminal project. We know that in 2014, when this matter first came up, the Southwest Florida Water Management District is of record in a letter dated July 8, 2014, indicating that the concept of a trade of lands from the South Swell Company was not viable. We have inquired as late as this morning of the author of that letter, Mr. Frank, with the Southwest Florida Water Management District, to ask him if anything has changed. And the answer that we received is no, nothing has changed. We also know that Mr. Randy Armstrong, the Executive Director of the Water Management District, has spoken directly with your county manager, Mr. Merrill, and has indicated that the concept of that kind of a land exchange is not something that they would consider. And the district has indicated what they might consider, which is very different from that concept. This area has been restored at a cost of over $2.5 million, the labor of many thousands of people who put hours into this effort. We don't believe that this is the appropriate way to go, and we are concerned. Thank you.
Commissioner White, he has a question.
Thank you. I was going to save this for such time that we get to the item, but, you know, since Mr. Lee's brought these issues up, and since he's here at the podium, I just want to be sure when we get to this item that the deal is not structured in any way, shape, or form such that the Board would be held to any particular site or obligated to any particular site, regardless of what any type of data may even show. Is that right?
Yes, that's my understanding, that this is further due diligence to determine if either site would be suitable.
Okay. So, I obviously cannot speak for the other six commissioners at this dais, but I just want to make it clear for the record, where I stand is that, you know, what I'm most interested in in this exercise is seeing how viable the Williams Park site is. And from that perspective, you know, there has to be some level of comparison to the Schultz Preserve site with respect to weighing costs and things like that. But my apprehension with regards to the Schultz Preserve site still exists. I'll even go so far as to say that if a vote were held today, that, you know, I would be in strong opposition to the Schultz Preserve site. So, I just want to state now for the record, while we have interested parties here, that when we get to the item, you know, should I support the item, it'll be solely because I want to understand what the Williams Park site looks like.
Thank you, Commissioner White.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Next speaker is Douglas Denis, then Mary Keith, and Mary Ella Smith. Good morning.
Good morning. I am Doug Denis, and I'm here in my capacity as Conservation Chair of Tampa Audubon Society, and also commenting on item B12, following up with Mr. Lee's comments. I just have a couple of quick comments and kind of a question, I guess. In previous funding requests related to this ferry project, the Fred and Ida Schultz Preserve has been identified as, and I'm quoting here, "the only suitable location on the east side of the bay for a ferry terminal." And if that's the case, then why are the taxpayers being asked to fund yet another site evaluation? And if that's not the case, why were you told previously that that is the only viable Moving on from that, I participated in bird surveys and in a bio blitz at the Schultz Preserve over the past year, and you'll be hearing more about that from our next speaker. I've been very impressed with the beauty of the preserve and with the diversity of wildlife that's utilizing it. It's a wonderful restoration site. To diminish this site by converting a significant part of that site to a ferry terminal would be a travesty. And on a larger, from a larger perspective, conversion of the Schultz Preserve or any of our wonderful ELAP properties that we have in Hillsborough County to any kind of commercial enterprise would set a horrible precedent. I think it would make it very difficult for you to deny requests in the future by other developers to come in and ask to use any, some of our other sites for their own purposes. So, I would urge you to be very careful in considering this, and I would, I'm absolutely opposed to utilizing the Schultz Preserve as a ferry terminal site. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mary Keith, and then Mary Ella Smith. Good morning. You have papers to pass out? If you give them to the clerk over here, she'll pass them out for you. And do you have anything in that that is, needs to be on the Elmo?
Yes.
Okay. And there is a microphone there, too, for you, if you would like to be over at the Elmo. Okay.
I don't need that. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
My name is Mary Keith. I live in Tampa. I'm here as President of Tampa Audubon Society, representing about 600 people, members here. And what you have up here, what is being passed around are just the very brief summary of the results of the birding and wildlife surveys that we have been doing on the Schultz Preserve. We've been doing monthly surveys since August of 2017. So far, 145 different species of birds, 63 are migrants that are just coming through. Six are listed as threatened. These are birds mostly that live here year-round. One is endangered, and 10 is listed as species of special concern. So, Schultz is being a very useful, very important habitat and territory for these birds. 47 different species of butterflies, including the julia, and the picture in the middle there is a julia butterfly. This is the furthest north breeding location known in the state for julia butterflies. Given that, the county has spent several million dollars restoring this, this is just an indication of how successful that restoration has been, and something that the whole county should be proud of and should be wanting to try to maintain. Last January, we did a bio blitz, where we brought in 22 people, some from as far away as Gainesville and as far south as Naples, experts in birds, butterflies... as Gainesville and as far south as Naples, experts in birds, butterflies, insects, amphibians, fish, plants, et cetera. We spent a whole day out there, counting, measuring, documenting everything that we could possibly find. So the results of the bio blitz are there just on that day. Now, this is January, after a very cold snap, so a lot of the numbers were down from what we would have expected. Plants were frosted, plants were frozen, 55 species of birds, 15 species of butterflies, et cetera, et cetera. The third picture there is a valley carpenter bee. This is the only place that it has ever been found, east of Texas, east of the Mississippi, and it's down there in the Schultz Preserve. Two-hundred-and-twenty-six different species of plants, 141 of which are native. So even though it's a restoration area, it's being a wildly successful restoration area because it's our native plants that are there, including one that's threatened, and 43 new ones that we found on that day. So what we want to say is Tampa Audubon is we're not opposed to having the ferry. We are opposed to using this site because a lot of these, the insects in particular, were up in some of the highlands, the upperland area, where the road would be going, where the terminal would propose to be sited. Thank you.
Thank you. Mariella Smith?
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mariella Smith, and I'm here today to ask you to proceed with the high-speed ferry projects, both the MacDill commuter route and the cross-bay routes linking Hillsborough and Pinellas Counties. I've worked on several local planning efforts and participated in several transportation plans. We have many plans expressing a public desire for ferry service connecting communities around Tampa Bay. We often talk about regional mass transit. This is our first chance to really connect town centers and communities across the bay with high-speed mass transit. Commissioners, South County citizens have occasionally expressed frustration at being somewhat left out of plans for new transit. These ferries would include South County in an exciting new mass transit system connecting communities and destinations around Tampa Bay. We will never catch up with our transportation backlog if all we ever do is keep adding more lanes to roads. We can't afford it, and in many places, widening our roads has negative impacts on neighborhoods and town centers and the environment. The high-speed ferry is an innovative solution that will actually take cars off the road without the impacts and expense of paving more lanes, without even adding more buses to the roads. And it's an elegant, fun, low-cost, environmentally-friendly way to get around Tampa Bay. I participated in the first meetings about these ferries five years ago. Frankly, I don't understand what's taking so long to get this done. And as I go around the county talking to voters while I'm campaigning, people are clamoring for these ferries to be implemented all over the county, particularly in South County and in Tampa, but everywhere. We've been talking about it for five years. The talking part is done. It's time for the doing part. And before you today is the matter of evaluating the sites. So we can work out any other concerns about site evaluation during the process. Let's just move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mariella. We'll now move to off-the-agenda speakers. First speaker is Ray Reed, then Kenneth Wodzinski. Morning, Ray. It's good to see you.
It's good to see you all, and frankly, any day above ground without buzzards or flies on you is a great day.
The item I want to speak about is what is known as the Hillsborough County Poor Farm, actually the second Poor Farm, that was purchased in 1905 along Hillsborough Avenue from 22nd Street to 30th, land running from Hillsborough to Hannah. I'm not going to go into extreme details. I've provided five pages in front of you that have a lot more than I want to speak about here and possibly could. I approached Commissioner Merman's staff back in January of 2015 about, did you know you have a cemetery on 22nd Street?
Yes.
And the Commissioner's aide, who grew up here, said, "No, we don't," and did some research, and it's on the county's Mo list, and lo and behold, that was the location of the 1950 through 66, last of the indigent burials within Hillsborough County. I've spent three years sporadically doing a lot of research. Your own meeting minutes are online, back to January 5, 1846. Just go off to the clerk's website, Meeting Minutes, Meeting Minutes, and when you get to that blank page that asks for book number or meeting date, type in Book A. That'll take you to 1846 through the 1850s, and the handwritten notes of some poor secretary sitting in this audience taking the meeting minutes with no skin in the game are there. Book H is 1904 through 1907, when the Poor Farm was purchased. It shows this county's growth and the sausage making that took place, and the classism, the racism, and all the uglies that we try to pretend still don't go on. But in my research on that Poor Farm, that should be given county, state, and national historical significance. It housed the State Isolation Hospital, smallpox, typhoid, the first Poor Farm, which later evolved into the County Home and Hospital, and that is the source of, and genesis of today's healthcare services, aging services, children's services. And when I joined the county with the Indigent Healthcare Plan as a Division Director, I asked for the history, and it seems like in the mid-'50s, suddenly everything sprang to life. Oh, no. The mid-'50s was when it was polite conversation. When you go back further, there was a lot of ugly. The particular ugly I'm addressing here, the burials.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We do have three additional on-the-agenda speakers, and I'm going to flip back to them before I continue with off-the-agenda. Commissioner White?
Madam Chair, we're just wondering if the warning light is working. It seems to maybe not be functional. If that's the case, if we could just ask the clerk's office or someone to just let the speakers know when they have about 30 seconds to go.
Ione Townsend is the next speaker for on-the-agenda. I think I got your name right this time.
You did. I'm very proud of you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Good morning.
I was wondering if you were going to accomplish that today. My name is Ione Townsend. I'm here as a citizen, but I'm also Chair of the Hillsborough County Democratic Party. I'm speaking to D-4, the ordinance, the proposed ordinance to make constitutional officers nonpartisan elections. The absence of party labels is confusing to voters. A voter looks for a candidate who shares-
Ione, do you want to speak in the public hearing portion for D-4?
No, I was-
Or do you want to just speak in regular public comment?
I thought I was going to speak during the D-4. It doesn't matter to me.
Oh, we haven't brought up D-4 yet. We're still in just public comment.
Okay.
So we'll bring you, we'll bring you back up when we get to.
All right.
Okay? Thank you. We'll go back to off-the-agenda speakers. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Calvin Ginn. I was here March 7 and met the Board and presented my capstone project. I'm a student and going to be a graduate at St. Petersburg College in a Bachelor's Program of Public Policy and Administration. In my capstone project, I held a community fun run which benefited Quantum Leap Farm, which is in Odessa, here in Hillsborough County, and the event was a huge success. It raised awareness. I had, for a first-time event, 70 participants. I gained sponsorships that paid for the event, and the charity benefited $2,114.91. And as I graduate and move into private life now, I am going to hold a second annual fun run to benefit Quantum Leap Farm, and it's scheduled for 7 April of 2019. And again, I request the assistance from Hillsborough Government to approve that permit so we can hold the event on Lake Francis Preserve as we had done in the first race. Other than that, I would like to say thank you again for your support, and Hillsborough County is a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will make sure Quantum Leap Farms is in my district, and I've always been a big supporter of everything they've done, and I applaud you for putting this event together. I'll make sure our staff is aware of this, and they will contact you. Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Merman is absolutely right. It is in her district, but I've got a lot of friends up there, and I heard about your event and how successful it was, and how proud and happy the people were, and how excited they are about the prospects of, you know, it returning. So any assistance, Commissioner Merman, that you may need, please count on me to be there as well. And sir, thank you. That was very insightful and thoughtful of you to choose that project.
Thank you.
Really good project. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Next speaker is David McAllister, then Christopher Paradis. Good morning, David.
Good morning, Commissioners. David McAllister. As you know, I come here to advocate for an appreciation and recognition of local history and veterans and their descendants, especially of the War Between the States period in the 1860s. First of all, I'd like to say that I appreciate the prayer for separated children there at the borders from their illegal parents. I think that they are being used as hostages or human shields by the real criminals. Number two, we had a proclamation today for LGBT Pride Month, and as you know, as you know, I've long been an advocate for respect for all, and especially if you want respect for the rainbow flag, you need to respect the Confederate flag. Southerners, as you said this morning, actually still face discrimination, quote, "just before being who they are," unquote. All people needed to be treated with dignity and respect and eliminate prejudice where it exists. Next picture. Yes. Yes. Put that up. Please. This is a picture of prejudice and disrespect in action, criminal action.
Mr. McAllister-
Madam Chair.
Okay. I do not want to put staff in an uncomfortable position of having to decide if something goes on the Elmo or not.
Okay.
And I would like our county administrator to know, no, we can't put that up.
Okay. Well, I see free speech is very free here in this chamber. Anyway, I'll redact the offending portion, which shows a disrespectful treatment of a Confederate monument here in Hillsborough County. It's a criminal action, I would point out to you, and those people, including elected officials who supported and kowtowed to that sort of anti-American agitation, should know that in this election cycle, their actions will be remembered by the 20% of the population which has Confederate ancestry and identifies as Southern Americans. LGBT got a Pride Month, April is Southern Pride Month with Confederate Memorial Day, and we need a proclamation, too. As part of Southern American pride, the Wilson Chapter of the United Daughters of the Confederacy and the Benjamin Camp of the SCV will again be participating in Independence Day parades in Temple Terrace and Brandon. You remember Brandon. Brandon is the closet where you move the, quote, where you move the memoriam eterna monument into. Being an election year, we can look forward to seeing a few politicians at most of these parades and see how they take the heat, and that's the sun heat, not the political heat. So we'll see you again after the no-meeting period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Chris Paradis.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's quite all right.
Paradise.
Everybody gets it wrong.
I get it.
I'm here to talk about failed economic initiatives that are somehow always finding their way into the budget, and I'd like to point out one, which is Film Tampa Bay, the Film Commission. It has received from this body in Tampa, the city of Tampa, 1.64 million in operating costs. It has expended about $400,000 or so of incentives, and it reports an economic output of 2.2 million. Using Florida State's return on investment calculations and assuming a 3% return on that money to taxpayers, which is generous, that gives $66,000 returned to the taxpayers for an investment of almost a little bit more than $2 million. If you figure out the ROI on that, it's a minus .97. Minus one would be no return whatsoever. .97 is horrendous. Even if you gave a 10% return on investment, that would be a return on investment of .9, minus .9, which means basically the taxpayers are losing all of their money on investment, which shows why this body should be very careful when you pick winners and losers. Investing in the film industry in Tampa Bay may sound like a good thing, but for taxpayers, it's a losing investment. And I am fighting for taxpayers, and I hope that you all are fighting for taxpayers. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And we do have a Commissioner that would like to ask you a question. Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
When you did those calculations, did you take in consideration the goodwill factor and the earned residuals from the increased market data, from how many people begin to see, learn, and appreciate and understand who Tampa is?
Yes, Commissioner. The Film Tampa Bay itself has said that but for those investments, there would be, that 2.2 million wouldn't have been put into our economy, and there's only been one major film, if you want to call it a major film, The Infiltrator. Everything else has been for commercials, which don't generally have that sort of a intangible effect on the economy of Hillsborough County. So the only thing we can look at really is The Infiltrator, which was a movie about the laundering of money here in Tampa, which pretty much, this kind of failed economic policy is nothing more than the laundering of taxpayer money to individual pockets. So I would say, yes, I've considered that, and the 3% is more than generous for considering those kinds of intangibles. Typically, that would be within the 1% to 2% range. As you know, there's a 1% tax on sales here, which is really the only hard money that's coming back to taxpayers. So 3% would account for that. 10% is more than generous. And still, you're at a minus .9.
This is an area where I understand the opportunities and the pitfalls, and you do touch on a couple of very valid points. The movies themselves, which is how you started, I don't think you were very clear. Movies themselves, when they portray our market, increase our visibility, just as major ballgames do, and it's hard to read and measure the value of that impact. I know that when Magic Mike and a number of other movies were done in Tampa, you know, Ebor City, the one that, you know, I guess the, I don't remember the name of the movie, but it featured Ebor, those all increased, helped to increase our bottom line through increasing tourism and interest in Tampa. You're saying that only one movie was made out of the investment of that money. Maybe we need to go back and look at our policy and maybe make some tweaks to make sure that the money's being spent on what does elevate our presence. And Mr. Merrill, is there any language in there that requires the making of any of the commercials to have to use local talent and production companies to do that, or are we paying outside the mo- Or are we paying outside the market companies to bring their people in and do it?
I'd have to ask staff to research it.
I could answer that question if you'd like.
Well, I think what I'd like to do is maybe have you bring this up in future issues, to have staff come back with a report about, you know, the movies and language. Oh, Greg's here.
Probably bring it back up in future issues. We're researching it now.
Yeah.
So I don't know whether the ordinance does, but by practice, it's a little bit of both.
To get to your point, I think that making this investment has tremendous opportunities. But we want to make sure that we hit our mark. And I think you touched on some valid points.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next speaker is Jim Davison. And then Johnny Depoe.
Good morning, Commissioners. I rise this morning to help inform you of the recent developments in transportation planning here in Hillsborough County. I'm sure you've already heard about the efforts by organizations in the city of Tampa attempting to secure a petition to place a one-cent sales tax for roads, rail, and buses and set up a monitoring committee that essentially ties the hands of this body as far as transportation planning goes. The pact that was formed five days after this body sent by unanimous vote a transportation plan raising 2 point, or $8.2 billion, of which 6.2 billion goes for transportation to your CAC for their discussion, all without raising taxes. The numbers I gave you were vetted by the county administrator and found to be true. There are no numbers as far as how much one-cent sales tax will bring in on the revenue petition. The Tampa Bay Times, which has refused to print the plan you sent to the CAC, was quoted, has quoted the usual. A one-cent sales tax equals $280 million a year for 30 years, where it will bring in $8.4 billion. Almost exactly what the plan I gave raises without raising one penny in taxes. And there's nothing for affordable care. You cannot spend that money on affordable housing. Somebody is lying. It's Ms. Weiss, Mr. Fessler, Mr. Brickley, or me? I don't think so. The real number, and I want you to, everybody in this county should realize this number. The real number that a 1% sales tax will raise over 30 years, starting at $280 million the first year, is $15.2 billion. That's a lot of money. The funny part about that $15.2 billion is it will not pay for the highway capacities needs that have already been determined by the MPO and by Go Hillsborough. They tie your hands. You will not be able to make that determination that has already been determined for you. So the people in this county will not be able to add lanes or build the roads that they are going to need. They don't allow you to, they don't allow enough money to do it. And those are the facts. And I could spend all day here going through this petition that was hastily prepared and is ill-informed. But basically, this is declaring war on the people of Hillsborough County. And I have nothing against putting something on the ballot. I urge them to put it on the ballot. What I have a problem with is them not telling the truth. We don't need the Russians here because we have this. I thank you very much, and I hope you have a wonderful week.
Thank you, Jim. Last speaker is Johnny. Good morning.
Good morning. I am worldwide, global sovereign despot. I represent the whole globe. I represent America. I actually represent all of you people. As far as budget goes and stuff like that, I'm not really worried about how low Hillsborough County or Tampa fall because I already told them that we're going to cover all of that. We have a different fine and different currency. So it's not like Tampa's going to fall below anything or the people going to fall below anything. They're not understanding stuff. Yes, we have the county and the city here. But these are also the first sovereign cities, first sovereign counties stepping up out of the whole lockdown situation. I understand that most people don't understand what's going on and stuff. And no, Trump's not wrong with what he's doing with the families and stuff. You've got to understand what's going on. You have 30 million people disappearing every freaking day in Mexico, and you can't explain where those bodies are going. And then you've got Central Americans that are, those indigenous people that do not fight and do not warn and all that stuff. That's unfair for them. North America, South America, you still have indigenous people here too. Now, like, as far as like your taxes goes, vast part of your little groups and stuff like that, people that want to play with the commercial scene, they shouldn't be weighing that on the people because the people are not playing in the commercial scene. Commercial scene is created for the people that want to play those commercial games. That's why you have tax. That's why you have a certain, that's why you have a certain bill because you signed up to play those games. Now, because you ain't filling out your paperwork the right way or categorizing yourself in the right way or putting yourself in the right correct status, citizenship, membership, or status quo as of who you are. So like, with all the protests, they need to be more clear with everything also and with all the leaders. That means acting governments, sub-governments, commercial governments, real governments, living entities, commercial entities. We need a whole collaboration with this global movement that's going on. We're not nations and kingdoms. So we're no longer really under statesmen. We're coming up out of all that lockdown, slave states and slavehood and stuff like that. You may call it work and stuff right now, but we're coming up out of all of that. And like Confederacy, y'all got to understand, we got a Dixie history thing. I got redneck friends and stuff like that. We're not racist or anything like that. We hang out together. We do bonfires and everything else together. Now, racism is a falsehood that you're trying to brew up. It ain't never been no racism here. Just like Jimi Hendrix was telling you over there in England and stuff. We don't have black and white people here in America. We have many different skin tones. Black and white is a category for hollering people and a category for placing people in different categories. Black and white is something that you call yourself when you don't know your genealogy and your ancestry. Makes me, all of you need to be working on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now close the public comment portion of the meeting. May have a motion to approve consent. Motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Miller to approve that consent agenda. Those are the A items. Without any further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, Mr. Merrill.
Yes, we have a couple of minutes before your public hearing. So we'll do B2, which is a head start item.
Dr. Jay, you got to go at the first. Get up here quick, run.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, Dr. Jenkins. Head start, early head start. Seeking approval for the 2018-19 VPK contract with the Early Learning Coalition. This will allow us to do continued services beginning July 1st for about 500 children.
Okay. Thank you very much for the explanation. We're on item B2. Motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner White. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please record your vote on B2.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Great, thank you.
And I think we can probably go ahead and start the public hearings.
Yeah, I'm 1:10 o'clock.
Hank, in this county attorney's office, to seek reimbursement from FEMA for the collection of post-disaster debris, we have to show FEMA that we have the authority to go on private property, on private roads, to remove that storm debris. During Irma, we had to, through a series of emails and memos and letters, explain to FEMA that we did have that authority to remove that storm debris on private roads. They suggested that we put in ordinance form, the language that's here before you that says that we do have that authority during a declared state of emergency to remove that storm debris for health, safety, and welfare purposes. We expect this will expedite our ability to seek reimbursement from FEMA if we have another storm event. And this is a public hearing.
Thank you very much for the explanation on item D1. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on item D1 in favor of? Anyone here speaking in opposition to item D1? Close public hearing. A motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote. D1.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
D2.
Good morning, Commissioners. Paul Johnston, County Attorney's Office. We have for a public hearing amendments to the trespass towing and immobilization ordinance. They have been set out in the background of the agenda item. And a copy of the ordinance has been placed for the clerk's office for public review. We do have one request to make an addition to the agenda item. It is on your screen, requiring that before a vehicle is towed, because its license tag shows its registration has expired, that they actually verify that the tag is in fact expired and just that the sticker hasn't been removed or stolen from the vehicle or not. This is a public hearing and be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Paul, for that explanation on item D2. This, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of item D2? Anyone here to speak in opposition to item D2? Okay. Action. Motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Miller and Kemp. Seeing, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
D3.
Okay, D3. Commissioner Miller, would you like to offer some after? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Helen Ferris with the County Attorney's Office. This is a proposal to change the county charter to require that amendments to the charter receive a 60% vote instead of the current 50% plus one or majority. It's a fairly straightforward proposal to remind the board that it requires five affirmative votes to pass this. It's been duly noticed, and this is a public hearing.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an issue that I brought forth, I guess, a couple of months ago concerning the charter and the passage of amendments to the charter. I took the mirror after the Florida Constitution, where 60% required to amend the constitution of the state of Florida. Our charter is just as important as the constitution of the state of Florida is. And I felt that we need to make sure that we have a vast majority of those who approve items going to the charter do the same here in Hillsborough County. So that's the reason I brought this forth.
Okay, thank you very much. And we will now move to the public hearing. We will open that up. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of item D3? Anyone here to speak in opposition to item D3? Okay. Please come forward. Are you for D3?
Yes, D3.
Please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Karen Giroux, and I am coming here to speak against the 60% supermajority proposal. Changing the state constitution to a 60% threshold was thought to be necessary at the state level after several frivolous constitutional amendments were put forth in 2002. Most of us recall the pregnant pig constitutional amendment that is symbolic of this abuse. And we all agree that livestock regulations are best defined in state statute, not embedded in our state's constitution. However, this type of amendment abuse hasn't been rampant at the county level this far. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our last county charter amendment were six years ago in 2012. One for the inclusion of the financial impact statement on future local ballot measures and another for the county internal performance auditor. Both good policy proposals. The adage, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it," certainly applies here. And I would just like to mention, I believe, in that charter review committee, not the past one, but the one prior to that, they actually considered this and decided against it. Just throwing that in there. So it might be better revisited in a charter review committee. I watched the previous discussion on this issue, and I agree with a point too that Commissioner Kemp brought forward. And she said that this could pass with a controversial amendment and lock in a bad policy proposal, and it would require a 60% vote to repeal it. To me, either the nonpartisan constitutional officer proposal or the current effort to add a 1% sales tax to the county charter are examples of bad proposal pairings. Tax language is one that should be in ordinance, not embedded in our county charter. Furthermore, the 60% threshold will make it more difficult when we finally get a charter proposal to fix the term limit loophole. Or we finally restructure the BOCC to allow for more single-member districts that put representation closer to the people. I would gladly serve on next year's charter review to work on a consensus to get these issues finally solved. So in summary, I would recommend, please, don't vote for this. Or if you do, I would like to see it for just revenue-raising charter amendments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Gerald White, Hillsborough County community activist. First, as an African-American citizen here in Hillsborough County, born and raised in the state of Florida, I guess my number one question that I've been asking throughout the community, has the African-American people throughout the state in Hillsborough County ever raised a question about the 60% vote? And I have been, have not been able to find any objection to the 60% vote. It's a citizen decision to move to the 60%. Your charter, your constitution should have a high bar. And in this respect, it's the citizens' choice to go to 60%. So I can support this going on the ballot, Commissioner Miller, and allow the citizens an opportunity to have a say whether or not they want to move to 60%. I will say, the majority of the charter amendments have been passed in Hillsborough County with over 60%, with one exception. The charter itself was not put in place with a 60% vote. And so I could support it going to the ballot and allow the citizens to have an opportunity to weigh in on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on item D3? Okay, we'll now move to board discussion and vote. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by, you second? Commissioner Kemp and Higginbotham on item D3. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion failed. Commissioners Chris, Hagan, Merman, and White voted no. Motion failed, three to four.
Okay. Next item.
D4.
A D4, again, is an amendment to the county charter to provide that the election of the five constitutional officers be done on a nonpartisan basis. Again, this requires five affirmative votes. It's been duly noticed.
Thank you very much. And we have quite a few speakers for this, for item D4. Do you have more? Okay. Commissioner Higginbotham, would you like to, or wait after public comment? Okay. We'll now move to open up the public comment portion, the public hearing for item D4. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of item D4? Anyone? Okay, please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Nick Jummas. I live in Newport-Ritchie. I'm a student of public policy at St. Petersburg College. First of all, what a historic event it is when a member of the public is able to come and speak at a meeting like this. I think it's what makes America truly unique. And because of that, I am proud to be an American. Of course, I rise today to speak on issue D4. As with any public policy analysis, we need to consider our goals and priorities when it comes to something like this. The stakeholders in this analysis would be the county, the incumbent office holders and future candidates, and the public at large. In my analysis, I consider the public at large to be the chief stakeholders. In my analysis, I consider the public at large to be the chief stakeholders in this issue. I want to address a previous comment before, earlier, that somebody had made when they came to speak about this, and that was that having no party labels confuses voters, and this is very insulting, because it implies that voters are stupid, and voters are not stupid, they're simply treated like they are. Thirty percent, 38% of Hillsborough voters are registered Democrat, 32% are Republican, with the remaining 30% having no major party affiliation. Because of Florida's closed primary system, roughly one-third of voters are marginalized and are unable to participate in the primaries, which are the most important part of the electoral process, and incidentally have the lowest voter participation rates. In America today, one thing is very clear: partisanship is tearing us apart. I'm right, you're wrong, red versus blue, me against you. These are the polarized attitudes that partisanship creates. Our great country was not founded with political parties. It was founded with the spirit of liberty. The spirit of liberty sustains freedom. Freedom demands heart. It demands character and virtue of our voters and our leaders. No great nation can survive when it is at odds, when we are locked in a tumultuous battle from one side or another. Subversion of our, and corruption of our civic duty is what partisanship breeds. This is not American. Democracy is not perfect, and freedom has its difficulties, but today we can take a step in the right direction, and we can eliminate some of the venom in our politics. So I urge you to unanimously vote in favor of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of item D4? Okay, we'll move to the opposition. First speaker is Ayone Townsend. And if everyone, we've got a quiet list, Michael Kuzmaszki, Betty James, Dee Williams, Catherine Starnes, Angel Urbina, Susan Davis, Karen Jeroche, and Gerald White also to speak in opposition to item D4.
Is this book left here on purpose? Was this left here on purpose? Okay, good morning. My name is Ayone Townsend, and I'm speaking and requesting that you oppose the proposed ordinance outlined in D4. The absence of party labels is confusing to voters, as a voter looks for a candidate who shares their values and their ideals. Having party affiliation next to the candidate's name helps accomplish that fact. This is also backed up by empirical evidence. Research shows that voter turnout is actually lower in nonpartisan races. We see that in down-ballot drop-off, where nonpartisan officers are usually listed. So this can be viewed as a form of voter suppression. Nonpartisan elections are actually more expensive, because the candidate has to spend more time and energy sending cues to their voters about who they are and what they represent. We've often heard of the term, of the phrase, "There are no nonpartisan races," and there really are no nonpartisan races. We all do our research, and we all know who the candidates are affiliated with. So I would like to ask you to oppose the proposed ordinance outlined in D4 and see it as a tactic of voter suppression. Thank you. I didn't use three minutes.
Thank you very much. Michael Kuzmaszki, Kuzmarszki? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mike Kuzmarkey, and, thanks. I'm Mike Kuzmarkey, and I'm a member of the Hillsborough County Republican Executive Committee and Republican Committeeman for Precinct 525. I rise in opposition to the county commission's proposal for nonpartisan elections for certain countywide offices, D4 on the agenda. To me, this is just the first step of a larger plan to eventually convert all county elections to nonpartisan. Ultimately, I believe it's designed through lower voter turnout to elect so, more so-called moderate candidates with the unstated but ultimate goal of electing more progressive candidates. That includes the latest effort to raise taxes. Our community leaders can squander hundreds of millions of dollars in unaffordable commuter rail and heavily subsidized buses. These leaders are frustrated with the traditional election process, because voters in the county and throughout Tampa Bay have been too smart to let them shove unneeded trains down our throats. The so-called establishment has apparently come to the conclusion that there seem to be far too many of us pesky, deplorable conservatives who actually want elected officials to solve problems, not create more of them. Their answer: nonpartisan elections. For me, switching away from an R and a D to an NPE would eliminate the need for inconvenient primaries, in which office seekers would be held hostage to the core base of Republicans and Democrats. They say hostage, we say accountable. In fact, one analysis I read about the disadvantage of nonpartisan elections said that voters may be less informed and less likely to vote. They're required to learn the platforms of every candidate in a nonpartisan race. This analysis said that voting on a party basis is easier and more convenient by learning a broad philosophical agenda of one party and supporting those candidates. Imagine that, using your precious vote to find politicians who actually share some of your beliefs. Outrageous, some of our community leaders might say. Nonpartisan elections also increase the odds that there will be many candidates in primaries who share similar political philosophies. This will split the vote and allow less-popular candidates to win. So much for majority rules. Look, I'm not saying the commission here is going all Eugene Debs on us, but I think that nonpartisan elections are just another attempt by the establishment to take away power from voters under the guise of trying to fix divisive elections. Politics ain't parti. It's messy for a reason. That's democracy. Dare I say it again: democracy. Stop trying to take it away from us.
Thank you. Next speaker is Betty James, and then Dee Williams after Betty.
Good morning. I'm in opposition, of course you know this, I've been here before, to this item. I've been a county worker, campaign worker, for 18 years. I have gone out into the communities, talked to people, and have had, heard their positions. I've heard their questions and their uncertainties about this thing. So I'm going to talk to you today about what happened to me a week ago. I'm going to give you this example, because I'm going to relate it to this situation later. I received an email from a political consultant to one of the judicial candidates. She told me she had contacted an attorney for an opinion concerning nonpartisan judicial races and their interaction with our club. She provided the attorney with incorrect information without contacting me for confirmation. The attorney did not, also did not contact me to confirm that what she was saying was absolutely true. He gave her a recommendation that no partisan candidate should interact with political clubs. The candidates have begun to say, "I have to come back and pick up all my material that you're going to pass out for me," because of this situation. And I'm sharing this information with you to consider. When deciding to force constitutional officers to run as nonpartisan candidates, this same action can very easily occur with constitutional officers. Those candidates are clerk of the court, property appraiser, sheriff, supervisor of elections, and tax collectors. These officers play a very important role in the direction that our county is going to take. Just as the judicial races, voters are denied the right for information, you, this is what you're doing, you're denying them the right to have the information to consider. You'll be denying the voters for these offices also the right to have that information. I question your use of advice from a political novice who is running in the political race for the very first time. Most of you have learned a lot from your first election cycle, and you, and continue to learn throughout every race you run in. So I'm going to ask you to think about the candidates. Oh, and the other thing you said, they're going to qualify by petition. They can qualify for, by petition. No, they won't, because there will be nobody who will be signing their petition. The people who sign those petitions are active in one party or the other. If you think that candidate, if you vote yes on this action, you will be making a mistake, one that will haunt you and Hillsborough voters for a very long time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dee Williams, then Catherine Starnes.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dee Williams, and I have been here before on this issue, and I'll say it again. There's no such thing as a nonpartisan. It's a joke. And for example, take the city council and judges. You think we don't find out what their political affiliation is, and if they want to hide from me by tying the non-party label, I just brush them off. And I noticed in the summary something about the increase in the number of non-party affiliated people. I'm appalled that the Republican Party hadn't analyzed this and found out that probably over half of them are disenchanted Republicans. And I could cite an example on this, because this guy went to be independent, and he didn't make any secret of it, and he had a broad audience to talk to, so I'll let you guess who that was. You think you'll increase the turnout? You won't increase the turnout. You'll probably decrease the turnout, because a voter is reluctant to go to the polls and vote for somebody he doesn't know anything about. As a matter of fact, I've had him say to me, "Why should I vote? I don't know anything about them." And so they just don't vote, and this will be the situation with this. The only thing I can see coming out of this is consultants will not only get rich, they will get more rich. And this, I said before, this charter has been studied six times since its inception. This, this item has come up in every single one of them. They didn't see fit to change it, and for the audience, this board is appointed by this body. It was studied three years ago in 2015. They didn't see any reason to change it. So my question would be, why do you even bother to have one if you're not going to follow their recommendations? And if you want to go down this road to non-party elections, my question to the, to you Republicans, and not only you, but the others, is give me one good reason why I should vote for you as opposed to your Democratic opponent, because frankly, I can't tell the difference.
Thank you very much. Catherine Starnes, and then Angel Urbina.
Thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners are elected by political parties. Bureaucrats are supposedly nonpartisan, yet we are seeing how Republican citizen Donald Trump is being treated by these supposedly nonpartisan government officials in Washington, DC. Political parties are good for government, and my question is, what are the free speech rights of a political party to give information about a candidate once their office has been changed to nonpartisan?
Thank you. Angel Urbina, and then Susan Virginia Davis.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Angel Urbina. I'm representing a lot of people in Hillsborough County. I'm a precinct committeman of the Republican Party, also a candidate for county commissioner. Being partisan gives the people an idea of the values and the commitment of that candidate in regards to the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Hillsborough County and the state of Florida. That information that my predecessors has bring is what I was going to talk about, but also it brings something else. It's already established in the laws of the state of Florida that those races are partisan, so I don't understand why we, as a county, are trying to go over what the state is already established. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Susan Virginia Davis.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for your time to listen to all of us. Mine is going to be pretty short. I know you're used to me coming about increasing my taxes, and my taxes have been going up lately, but now I'm here on this nonpartisan issue, and I wish you all would vote no. It is confusing to the voters, because I know the people in this room always pay attention, but the average voter probably doesn't have a clue which party some people are in. So nonpartisan, going to nonpartisan candidates would really confuse the average voter out there. It would cost more to the candidates to run their campaigns if it was nonpartisan. And I noticed in the last election on nonpartisan school boards, some people were extremely disappointed that 30,000 people didn't bother to vote in that very, very important race. And I was disappointed to hear that, too, that 30,000 didn't care enough about the school board to vote for those nonpartisan candidates. So this would decrease the turnouts. So I hope you all will vote no, and thank you for your time, and nice seeing all seven of you again. Thank you.
Good to see you, too. Thank you. Karen Jeroche and Gerald White.
Okay, thank you, Karen Jeroche. I would urge you, please, to vote no on D4. According to state law, candidates in nonpartisan races are prohibited on campaigning based on party affiliation, and their mailers may not state the candidate's political party affiliation. Voters will lose key, a key data point in their decision whom will best represent them. While there is no Republican or Democrat way to fix a pothole, knowing what party platform a candidate most aligns with is very revealing about their values and principles, and especially their priorities. Please don't take this vetting tool away from voters. Please vote against D4.
Thank you. Gerald White.
Morning, Commissioners. Again, Gerald White, Hillsborough County Community Activist. Of course, this issue has been studied by the Hillsborough County Charter Review Board and the Democratic Party, the Republican Party, the third party. I'm a registered Democrat here in Hillsborough County, and I've had the honor to represent the citizens at four Democratic National Convention. So I understand partisan politics. The only, the only thing I think that, when it's matter what party you're in, is when there's a vacancy. And so when there's a vacancy in one of these constitutional positions, it's whose governor? Is the governor a Democratic governor or Republican governor? And in that case, that's who gets appointed to the vacancy, a Democrat or Republican, based on who's in the governor's mansion. Really, this setup, it could be changed, and it probably need to be changed, because these are really administrative positions, and I don't like seeing the sheriff in commercials for partisan politics. I don't like seeing the supervisor of elections in political commercials and campaign for partisan politics. For that matter, the tax collector, even the clerk that deals with the courts, and so I could support it, really, going on the ballot, let the citizens make the decision. But the real way this need to be put into nonpartisan is that the positions themselves need to be placed inside the charter, moved away from constitutional status, and then they should be really strongly considered being nonpartisan. So I could support it, letting the citizens decide. I am a Democrat. I like partisan politics, but really, in Hillsborough County today, there is no real reason to have partisan constitutional elected positions. So I could support it, but I wouldn't want to do anything that would hurt African-American folks participating in the electoral process in Hillsborough County. I'm up in the air on this. Let the citizens decide. Give them a shot at it.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to item D4? Okay, move to close the public hearing. We'll now move to board discussion. Commissioner Higginbotham, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mary Helen, if you could come back up, come up.
She's there.
Would you come to the podium, please? You're here.
Yes.
Wonderful, like magic. Wanted you to explain the difference between the judicial and the constitutional's that was brought up earlier in comment.
Well, the judicial's candidates are treated in a completely different chapter in the Election Code, 105, that has to do with school board as well, and judicial... And judicial candidates have a lot of restraints on how they run their campaigns, which is much different from the constitutional officers. So it's treated completely different in the election code.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, have you? But you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you. When I brought this to the board, it came to my attention that there's concern about the number of voters who don't get to participate in the constitutional's. Over the last three years, and it was noted in the document, non-party affiliation has increased nearly 90%. That's 90% of the potential voters who could cast a vote to make a decision in the primary. They're denied this privilege of voting, and I think it's important that they have that opportunity. It affects the sheriff, the tax collector, property appraiser, supervisor of elections, and the clerk of the court. These are transactional office holders. That doesn't mean that they do not influence policy in this county, but unlike ourselves, they were not elected to cast a vote in these chambers. People don't walk into a business, as I mentioned when we first brought this out, and wonder if the grocer store or the banker is Republican or Democrat. Nor should they worry about, will I be treated differently? And I see no reason why we shouldn't elevate our constitutional officers to that same level of comfort. It was also motivated by me because of the frustration that we're seeing at all levels of politics. I mean, it started in Washington. We see it in Tallahassee, and it's coming here where the public is more and more skeptical of our actions. I want to do what I can in my remaining months here to help eliminate that. I worried this morning when I saw the traffic, learned of the traffic accident on I-75 that it was going to cause problems with my friends from Sun City Center to come up and state their opinion. And I've worked arm-in-arm, footstep-and-footstep with many of you. And where we have a difference of opinion on this, I've just asked that in our relationship with the nearly 15,000 votes that I have cast as a commissioner, that you judge me on those 15,000 and not just one vote? Because we differ with this. And I think it's important that I take this stand. Some people have claimed that this is politically motivated by me. Those who know me well, those who have worked with me, know that this is simply not the case. It is a pragmatic decision. It's about opening up and increasing confidence in our county system and simply getting the opportunity, providing the opportunity for more voters to cast a vote in our constitutional offices. With that, I'll make a motion to move this forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Higginbotham. There is a motion to approve item D4. Is there a second? Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Hagan. We're still in board discussion. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I'd like to call Ms. Ferris back to the podium, if I may. You mentioned that campaign rules for judicial candidates, and I believe you said school board candidates are addressed in their own chapters of state law. If this were to go out to the voters and ultimately pass, what would your legal opinion be on constitutional officer, candidates for constitutional office visiting with political parties, be it the executive committees or the local clubs?
I'm not that familiar and well-versed with campaign rules because that is related to, you know, the official running as a candidate. I'm not aware of anything that would prohibit a nonpartisan candidate from interacting, but I have not done that research. I would have to go and look that up for you.
How quickly can we get that answer? Because that's pretty important in this decision. Based upon the testimony that I've heard today and, you know, the level of interest of clubs wanting to have the opportunity to vet candidates.
Yeah, again, as Mary Helen was saying, it's not something we typically are encountering that issue because it's a private, personal candidate type of issue. But we could continue this to the end of the meeting.
Can you, yeah, can you call the supervisor of elections?
Actually, we're doing qualifying, so I'm up there.
And I have one additional question that I think can be answered by the end of the meeting as well. And that would be an opinion on elected nonpartisan constitutional officers appearing in materials in support of partisan candidates. Because that was brought up during the public hearing as well.
Okay.
So we should probably set a time certain for the public to know when this will come back, perhaps. I don't know what you would suggest.
Well, I think you could probably get, I have Craig Lammer's cell phone number. I think you could probably get these answers fairly quickly.
Is the last, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, do I still have the floor?
Yes.
Is the last item G3, Mr. Merrill? Is that the last item we're going to take up?
Yes, I believe so.
I'm going to move to continue this item to immediately.
Well, we already have a motion on the floor to approve this item. And we have a second.
G4.
I'll make a substitute motion to continue this item to appoint on the agenda immediately following item G3.
Actually, it'd be G4, sorry.
Okay, immediately following G4.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue. Is there, and there is a second by Commissioner Hagan. So let me get through the rest of the public comment, and then we'll take up your substitute motion. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Well, my comments will be toward the first motion. Now they can't be toward the second motion.
Do you want to wait until we bring it back?
Yeah, let's do that because my comments have to be toward the motion.
Okay, and Commissioner Hagan, would you be the same?
No, I want to speak to the substitute.
Okay, you're recognized.
I'm a bit confused. I don't know about our Democrat commission friends here, but in my time in office, we've frequently seen school board candidates, city council candidates come to REC meetings, come to club meetings. What would be the difference? If it's allowed now currently, I can't imagine there's any type of prohibition where all these candidates have been breaking the laws for forever.
Right. And I'm not aware of any prohibition. I just haven't.
I think we know the answer to the question, is my point. Okay.
Right. Exactly. Commissioner Miller?
Let me ask a question, Ms. Ferris, since she's up here. Seeing that this is a public hearing issue, if there is a motion to try to amend the language that we're talking about right now, would that have to discontinue this public hearing and bring it back again?
It depends on what the amendment is, if I'm following your question right.
Okay.
Are you going to make an amendment?
Well, we have a motion on the floor now to carry it forward to after G1.
G4.
G4, whatever it is. Let me ask this question. If a motion was made to amend this item to have the county commissioners as nonpartisan elected members, what would that do?
I would have to re-advertise it.
You'd have to re-advertise it.
Yeah, that's pretty substantive.
And that would go to the board meeting in July.
Okay. I might make that motion when you come back.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion to defer the item till after G4. To answer, the questions that have been brought up by Commissioner White, are there any other questions that need to be researched so that we cover everything and can bring this up? Okay, seeing none. So we have motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Hagan to defer this till after G4 at the end of our agenda. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, 5 to 2. Commissioners Kemp and Miller voted nope.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll see you later.
Well, I have one more.
Oh, D5.
Yes. This is, this is an ordinance that does not need the five votes. It's mainly a ministerial implementation ordinance to implement a requirement in the charter that a financial impact statement be instituted by ordinance. And so that's what this is. We also have added in here that instead of just solely being the budget director that writes the impact statement, I will be bringing back a resolution for board discussion to have a committee that would help, so it's not just one person, based on some of the discussion of the board. So that's what the ordinance does.
Okay, thank you for your explanation. Item D5. We'll open up the, see no questions, so we'll open up the public hearing. Those in favor of item D5, please come forward to speak. Those in opposition, are you in favor? Come forward. I have Gerald White and Karen Girroche.
Gerald White, Hillsborough County, community activist. To be honest with you, Madam Chairman, I was kind of surprised that a charter amendment, something that's in our constitution, the local charter here in Hillsborough County, was not backed up by an ordinance. Most significant lines in our charter is backed up by an ordinance. And I don't see any reason why we shouldn't have it in this respect. And so I support the issue. The question is, and I watched the tape from your last commission meeting, and you raised a concern about more committees. And I agree with you on that as well. So I could support the Hillsborough County Citizen Advisory Committee playing a role in there, seeing as though each commissioner, each district commissioner, appoint two members of the Citizen Advisory Committee. I think it's a good change. It's a need to change. That's a pretty good group, a great group, really. They really involve in county government, and so I think this is a good move. And kind of disappointed that something like this wasn't in place already. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald. I would like to ask the county attorney to clarify something because I know I brought this up in the briefing. There was a financial impact statement on the ballot a few years ago. What is the difference between that and this one?
I know, it's a little confusing. Back in 2012, the charter was approved by, the financial impact statement being required to be in the charter was approved by the voters. And the language that the voters approved said, "Do you want to approve a financial impact statement by ordinance?" So it required the ordinance to effectuate the language in the charter. So this is really an additional belts and suspenders to carry out the intent. But the charter is really the most powerful document.
So the question wasn't clear enough. It said it more for the ordinance, not the charter. That was asked of the voters in '12. Is that correct?
No, the charter language, the ballot language, is the same that you see here in the ordinance here. It's just the financial impact statement, and it just has to be implemented by ordinance.
Gotcha. Okay, so that's the difference. There is a protection in the charter right now, but it just needs to be implemented by ordinance. Okay, Karen Girroche, I know you're signed up to speak. Is Karen still here? Okay, anyone else wishing to speak to item D5? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, go to board discussion. Is there a motion by Commissioner Higginbotham, seconded by Commissioner Hagan? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote on item D5.
Motion carried, 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Your 10:30 time's certain, B3.
Good morning, Peggy.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Peggy Kaski, the county internal auditor. I'm here today to present audit report number 1802, which was the Jan K. Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program, also known as the ELAP, in Conservation of Environmental Lands, Management of Environmental Lands section. Very long title. The objective of this project was primarily to determine the control maturity level of the operating activities. Our approach was that the audit was conducted in conformance with the international standards of the professional practices of internal auditing, commonly known as the Red Book standards. In summary, the audit was conducted as part of an ongoing effort by three other external service providers to assist management with maturing their overall operations. There is one recommendation in this report that it's an opportunity to reduce the cost by about $50,000 per year, and that would be a reoccurring savings. Does the board have any questions or comments?
I see no questions. Thank you. We have a motion to approve item B3 by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Miller to approve item B3. Is there any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, 6 to 0.
And our 10:45 time's certain, we have two items, F1, B1. Do you want to take B1 first, or does it matter?
I think, I'd rather take B1 first, I think, and then the appointments. And before, is, who's going to present? Is it you, Ken? I just want to say a few words about the efforts of our staff to get, to right the ship at Career Source have been outstanding. And Ken Jones has actually parked himself at the Career Source offices to make sure everything is done right, all the Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted. I personally thank you very much for your efforts and your time. It is, we're almost there. We're getting to the finish line, but we still have more work to do to get this board put together and obviously do a CEO search. So I just wanted to say that to start. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate those kind words. Good morning, good morning, board. Here to speak to item B1, which is approving the Tampa Bay Workforce Alliance's, DBA Career Source Tampa Bay, their planning budget for their next fiscal year, 2018 and '19. Their fiscal year is July to June, same as the state's. This budget and process and approval by the BLCC is in compliance with the federal workforce innovation.
Excuse me, could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Beg pardon?
Did you identify yourself for the record?
I'm sorry. Ken Jones, Economic Development Department. Presentation and approval before the board of this budget is in compliance with the Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. There is no financial impact to the county. We also have with us from Career Source Tampa Bay, if there are any questions that they may be able to answer or may be called on to answer. We have Judy Dorsey, who is the interim executive director, and a director of finance, Michelle Doyle is here.
That's it?
So this budget is prepared and presented in a standardized format that's provided by Career Source Florida and used by all the regions in the state of Florida, 24 regions. This is one of those regions, region number 15. The budget is presented in a formulated process. It's based on appropriations, as well as some local economic conditions from the federal government in collaboration and partnership with the state of Florida. That number and that respective budget, which is revenue-generated numbers, is then presented to the local Career Source region, and that's what you have before you today.
Okay.
That number is an increase from the previous year of approximately $360,000. We, in presenting this to you, reviewed historical perspective of budgets being presented and changed. Historically, this number has been fairly accurate. If anything, the numbers increased throughout the year as a result of the organization applying for and receiving grant funds, as well as if there are some funds in another region that has not been expended. Those funds could be provided to this region as an opportunity to provide some additional services to the job seekers and employers here of Hillsborough County.
Awesome. Thank you very much. We're on item B1. Board discussion, board action, and motion to approve. And motion by Commissioner Higginbotham, seconded by Commissioner White to approve item B1. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, 6 to 0.
Thank you. And would you like to just explain the appointments and how they are in the book?
Sure. So item F1. Pursuant to the BLCC's guidance, staff has been working for the past few months on offering a slate of candidates for a reconstituted board of directors for Career Source Tampa Bay. The slate encompasses the required categories for representation of private sector business. The slate encompasses the required categories for representation of private sector businesses, workforce, education, and government, economics slash community development. These categories are in compliance with specific guidelines for appointment of board members as provided by federal and state statutes, as well as Career Source Tampa Bay's guidelines, bylaws, excuse me. For instance, the board must be comprised of at least 51% private sector businesses, as well as mandated membership from specific categories such as labor organizations and vocational rehabilitation. Additionally, we follow the new board policy for residency requirements for candidates, and we place an emphasis on identifying businesses that are located here in Hillsborough County. We've staggered the board appointments between one- and two-year terms, so that we can establish ongoing future appointments without disrupting the continuity of the board. We're asking for one residency waiver for a mandated category, as Dr. Ginger Clark, the primary leader of workforce development for Hillsborough Community College, does live in another county. Finally, due to timing, as well as vetting, we will also bring to the board an additional slate of private sector businesses in either August or September, that we were unable to address in this specific cycle. So basically, we need, and are working through a process to identify and have more private sector businesses on the board. This slate of candidates includes a broad variety of appointments from very large employers to small businesses, human resources expertise, accounting and audit experience, as well as community specialists in required categories of workforce training, economic development, representation of veterans, and labor. We're pleased to present this slate for your consideration and respectfully recommend approval. We're confident that they will be valuable resources in serving as the board of directors for Career Source Tampa Bay.
Thank you, Kim, for that great explanation. I appreciate it. Okay, we are on item F one. Board discussion, board action, motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Higginbotham, seconded by Commissioner Hagan to approve item F one. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Great, thank you all. Thank you again for your hard work.
You're quite welcome. Thank you, ma'am, chair and board.
And Ron, and Lindsay. Thank you all. Okay. Yeah, he'll be, he's coming. We got done quick? I think we have like six minutes before our next time certain.
All right, then we can go to procurement, beginning with B four through B nine.
Good morning, Scott Stormer, Procurement Services. Item B four is asking the board to award a three-year renewal of a participation agreement with Bank of America Merchant Services LLC, in the estimated amount of $4.6 million for ongoing as-needed processing of electronic payments associated with the acceptance of credit cards and debit card by various departments and agencies throughout the county. Based on the current rate of approximately 575,000 transactions per year, is estimated at least 1.7 million transactions will be processed over the next three years, at approximate a cost of about $2.71 per transaction. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Okay, thank you very much. We have motion to approve item B four from Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Hagan to approve item B four. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Item B five is asking the board to award a five-year contract to the only bidder, Lance Aviation Incorporated, in the amount of $1,310,000 for ongoing and as-needed maintenance and repair of the county's Bell Jet Ranger helicopter for the Public Works Department. Economic Development did not have three disadvantaged or three small business enterprise firms registered for these highly specialized services, therefore no participation goal or set aside was established. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Thank you. We're on item B five. We have motion to approve by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Item B six is asking the board to award a two-year contract to the respective lowest, responsive, and responsible bidders for ongoing as-needed purchases of emergency medical supplies for the fire rescue department, at a total estimate of a cost of $3,288,579.70. The Economic Development Department did not have three disadvantaged or small business enterprise registered for these specified supplies, therefore no participation goal or set aside was established. Procurement Services recommends approval.
Thank you, Scott, for the explanation. We are on item B six. We have motion to approve by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham to approve item B seven. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote on B six.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Item B seven is asking the board to award a five-year sole-source contract to Icon Supply Incorporated, in the amount of $2,978,643.64 for ongoing and as-needed purchase of various Icon, Solcon, and Eskawa brand variable frequency drives related items and associated services, which are required to maintain the utility facilities throughout the county. Icon Supply is the only authorized distributor and service provider for the identified brands in the state of Florida, and therefore is deemed the only reasonable source for the same. There are no subcontracting opportunities for disadvantaged business enterprises, as proprietary products will be provided exclusively by an authorized distributor. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We're on item B seven. We have motion approved by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Item B eight is asking the board to award a three-year contracts to the respective lowest and responsible bidders for ongoing as-needed purchases of hygiene paper products for a total estimated expenditure of $1,859,730 for the real estate and the facilities and services department. The Economic Development did not have three disadvantaged or small business enterprise firms registered for the specified commodities, therefore no participation goal or set aside was established. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Thank you very much. We're on B eight. We have motion to approve by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Miller and White. Okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Item B nine is asking the board to select, approve, and execute a professional services agreement with the highest-ranked and best-qualified firm, Fowler, Davidson Associates, in the amount of $2,344,353.92 for a project development environmental, or PDNE, study and design services for the widening of Van Dyke Road from Worley Road to Suncoast Parkway. To compress the overall schedule and expedite the project, the award amount includes earlier preparation of the topographic survey, right-of-way mapping, complete pond sighting, and 30% plans, which will overlap the PDNE and final design. A negotiated agreement and contract modification for a follow-on scope of design services will be submitted for the board's approval at a future meeting. The follow-on design services are currently estimated to cost an additional $4 million. The recommended firm has committed to subcontracting a minimum of 10% of its ultimate fees with certified disadvantaged business enterprises. Second part of this recommendation is to approve a budget amendment, which appropriates $500,000 from the mobility fee benefit District One fund reserves to the Van Dyke Road widening project to accommodate the recommended award encumbrance of the project PDNE and partial design services funding. All that said, Procurement Services recommends approval.
Okay, we're on item B nine. We have motion approved by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Chris. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to bring this up early, but I thought we would go through, because you were on a roll there. For some of these items on the procurement, and maybe you need to, I don't know if you're going to answer this, you have to have someone else answer. There were B five, B six, B seven, and B eight. You stated that there were not, there weren't, there weren't three small business or minority-owned businesses available for consideration. Is it policy or rule that you have to have three? Or are we saying you have one, and because there are three, that one does not qualify? What's going on there?
I believe it's actually the policy, but I'll let Economic Development speak to that. Teresa's coming up.
Hi. Teresa Campbell, Economic Development Manager, MBNSB Programs. The actual, sir, if we have only one or two firms, we actually give those firms two procurement to add to the procurement list, but if we can't, don't have at least three firms, then we can't set a goal. And we can't do a set aside. Is that answer?
So you're saying that there may be two small business or minority enterprise businesses available?
Yes.
But because we have three, they don't get the opportunity to be subcontractors?
We do not have the opportunity to do a goal. Correct.
Is that a policy of Hillsborough County?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Miller, I think, yeah, I think we need to look at that policy.
That is not being fair to minority businesses. I think we need to, I will bring, I might bring back under future items, but I think we need to look at that policy, because if we're requiring that you have three minority businesses or small businesses to qualify to get subcontractors, that is denying the opportunity for those smaller minority businesses to do work, because we don't have three. And that's, that's not your fault, that's our policy. So, I'm going to ask staff to come back with a, look at that and bring back a policy that alleviates that requirement, so that other businesses, regardless of, we have one, if they qualify and are able to do it, they get the opportunity to do it.
Is that, Teresa, is that a board policy?
It is actually a procedure, so we can look at that.
It's a, I'm sorry, it's a...
It's a written procedure for economic development, so...
So is it administrative directive?
Correct.
Okay, and what's it based on?
Competition. We want to make sure that there are at least three firms in any particular area in order for us to set a goal, because we want to have adequate competition for all the firms. It doesn't mean that a firm could not necessarily utilize that, a prime contractor is prohibited from utilizing it, it's just that we don't say there's going to be a 10% goal or a 5% goal on a particular contract.
But you're saying competition, and you're not allowing the minority or small businesses to even get a piece of the pie, because you're, the policy or rule, whatever it is, is saying that you have to have three. To me, that makes no sense. If we, if we have, if we have a minority business out there that can help pave a road, because they have the opportunity to do it, we should have, that minority business have the opportunity to do it.
I think, I think what she's saying is that does happen. It's just in terms of competition. So it's not that we don't have minority and small business firms participating, it's just in the competitive bidding. So why don't we bring it back, so we can do more full explanation of the directive, and then you can decide.
All right.
Let's approve this item, if you want to make a motion, because I really do support that. I talk to a lot of women-owned businesses, small businesses, that feel like they can't apply here, because we're too big for them, or something like that. So I think we need to be more welcoming to minority women, you know, disadvantaged businesses out there in going forward. I wasn't aware we had that policy, but I noticed the same thing Commissioner Miller did, so I'm glad he brought it up.
Okay.
Just, but I just want to be clear. So we are, we are fair and open, and we do have a good record of, this is just, I think this is just a technicality in terms of competitive bidding, not in terms of access. So I don't want to leave the public with the impression that we're not open and welcoming, because we are.
We, Madam Chair, we have come a long way, from the time I came this board, 2010 to now. But looking at this, the flag comes up in saying that there were three small minority disadvantaged businesses to do the business. And the question I'm asking is, the policy, is there a policy that says you have to have three? Or two, or one? That's my question. It seems here, when you read this, that you have to have three minority businesses to qualify, and since we don't have three, no one gets to business.
No, I think that's where the confusion, why don't we bring it back? The concept back, the directive back, and have a discussion, so I can have staff here to really explain it.
Okay.
But this, this item that you're approving now does have a goal, and does have participation.
Yeah, I didn't want to, I didn't want to slow him down, since we were going through, but I wanted to wait after, toward the end to ask the question.
All right.
Yeah, and I hope that it hasn't been my inability to express to you this, but we will give it in a more formalized fashion at a later date. Excuse me, thank you.
Can I ask you, is there a requirement within the main contract for a certain, for the main contractor to give us, like I know at the port, I think they do it at the airport also, where they have to state in their bid how much of the contract will be towards small and minority business?
If we do establish a goal, then we, then, then the requirement is in there.
Through the three. Okay, so that's the technicality, to make this better. Okay, good.
Thank you.
That's perfect. Okay, thank you. So, we have motion to approve B nine by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Chris. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And we can go to our 11...
Ms. Merrill, do you need a motion?
No.
Okay, you're going to bring it back. Okay, good. Perfect.
All right, so we can go to our 11:00 AM time certain, B 12.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Lyons, Public Works Department. Commissioners, we're here to discuss the seventh modification to the Tampa Bay Passenger Ferry Interim Public-Privet Partnership Agreement. Some time ago, the board approved hiring an owner's representative to manage the project, and in response to that, we entered into an agreement with AECom. And Mr. Bill Ferring is here, is the project lead on this project now. And over the last few weeks, both AECom, supported by outside counsel, Fred Springer from Bryant Miller, and Oliver worked with Southswell and HMS to do that. And I'm going to turn this over to Bill to provide a brief overview of the project.
Thank you, John. Good morning, Commissioners. Before beginning, I'd like to just recognize, in addition to Fred Springer with Bryant Miller back here, we also have in the audience today Matt Miller and Rob Hart with HMS Ferries and Southswell Development, respectively, in the back of the room here. The purpose of modification seven is to extend the interim agreement through the end of September, as John explained. But much more importantly, it's to initiate a, a refined and updated feasibility study on this entire project, in a way that we think will get us, at the end of the year, early next year, to a decision point for the, where the commission will have the information to make a rational decision as to whether this project should go forward or not, and in what form it should go forward. The work to be undertaken in modification seven is broken into two parts. There's a Phase One, which would be authorized with this action today. It's to be completed by the first of September, so we're on a very fast track. It includes two tasks. The first is to develop the schedule for completing the entire feasibility study by the end, or early 2019, develop proposed contracts for contractors to do the technical portions of the work, which I'll just talk about in just a second, and to develop a budget for the rest of the study, as we go forward through the end of the year. The second task is very, very important, and that is to identify, the developer is tasked with identifying alternative sites where the South County terminal for the ferry could be located. And even more important, to identify and research the mechanisms which would have to be undertaken for the county to gain control of those sites. You know, there, you can just look at sites, but how do you get control of them? The negotiated cost for this first phase, which would be approved with this modification, is $170,000. Phase one B, which would start in September and go through the end of the year into the early part of 2019, includes some very important studies. The first is an updated market and ridership survey and projection. The last survey was done over six years ago. That needs to be updated. There need to be preliminary planning and conceptual designs at at least two locations, so that we can compare what the development would be and the impacts would be at those locations. And to prepare a preliminary and proposed business plan for those development plans at each of those sites. It also includes studies of terminal connectivity between MacDill and among the South County areas where people live, an environmental evaluation, and an evaluation of off-site impacts and benefits. The cost of that second phase will be negotiated before modification eight comes back to this board in late September. But that's the purpose of the first phase, is to get those costs, so that we can make a, the county can make a decision on going forward. AECom has participated in the development of the scope and the negotiation of the price, and we recommend the approval of modification seven.
Great, thank you very much. Is that, you're done with your, your report? Is there anyone else from the team that wants to be involved? Okay, that's it? Okay, we'll now move, we're on item B 12. We'll now move to board discussion. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner Merman. I just wanted to make some brief comments to this item, just so that I'm completely transparent on where I am on the issue, and, you know, I really have felt compelled to make... And, you know, I, I really have felt compelled to make some of these statements based upon some of what I heard during public comment this morning about the item. So I just want to say clearly, for the record and the abundance of transparency, that my mind is made up on the Schultz site. I just cannot support the Schultz site for, for a ferry terminus. I will be supporting the item on the floor, however, strictly in the context of taking a look at the Williams Park site. If the Williams Park site is shown to be viable but cost prohibitive, then in my mind, we look further and dig deeper for appropriate sites. If it's viable at a slightly higher cost, and I know that slightly is a subjective word, that's up to, to this board to determine what would constitute slightly. But if it's viable at a slightly higher cost, then I would view spending that money to avert using the Schultz site as an investment in the Schultz site, as a further investment in the Schultz site. So once again, to be clear, I will be supporting the item on the floor, but for me, it's about weighing the Williams Park site as an option for this ferry.
Okay, we have quite a few. I, I do want to, just as a follow-up to Commissioner White. So you're directing that to AECOM? Those comments?
Those are just general comments for the board.
For the board, okay.
So when I, when I say the item, I should say staff's recommendation. I'm happy to just move the item at this point. I'll make a motion to approve item B 12.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner White to approve item B 12, seconded by Commissioner Chris. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized. You're next in the queue.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that we received 80 emails in support, Commissioners did, in support of this project. As I've stated before, as I've been around the county in the last couple of years, speaking all over to groups, especially in South County, and amazingly, Brandon and Lutz and other places, people have asked me about the ferry. They're extremely excited. Our ridership numbers for the Cross Bay, last year, the highest projections were three, 35,000. We ended up having 40,000. I'd also like to note that I did have the Greater Chamber of Commerce visit me, and I'm sure visited other offices, or I'm not sure, but they had noted that when they went to the base, as I've experienced many times before, when I have gone to the base, that they, they had asked, what can we do, the Greater Chamber of Commerce, to assist the base? And the answer was, let's get a ferry. And, and we have this letter from the, the chamber. The chamber and the military council are proud to maintain a dialogue with MacDill Air Force Base and recognize that transportation improvements are one of the areas we, as a business community, can support our installation. MacDill's four gates are access points for thousands of vehicles every morning and are heavily congested like so many other roads in our community. It's essential that we identify alternative transportation options to support personnel, personnel commuting to base, but also address congestion relief on thoroughfares in and out of our base. And again, I'll just say that for all the communities that we are considering ourselves competitive with and looking for transit options, we hear oftentimes about people going to Austin or Denver or Charlotte. They don't have this opportunity. We are blessed with the opportunity to be able to have ferries, a low-cost option for moving lots of people in our region, and one that was traditional in this region prior to the 50s, that there were many ferries traversing the water here in Tampa Bay. So we've also seen since then, since this, incredibly successful deployment of ferries in New York City. As I've stated before, they've just recently invested $325 million in ferry service, and the ferry service has been so popular that they went from having ferries of 150, accommodating 150 people on order to accommodating 350. They changed their orders because the ferry service there is getting such great ridership. So I'm all aboard and ready to go.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of questions. How much has the county put into this project thus far?
John, do you have any idea off the, on the fly, how much?
So the first, the first agreement, the initial phase of the agreement was for $100,000. And we've, have a work order not to exceed of about $200,000 with AECOM for the duration of the first phase. And so we've got, we spent very little of that money. So we've spent $100,000 to date.
We spent $100,000 today. You said the level was $200,000. They're asking for $170,000 now.
$170,000 for this agreement, yes, and about $200,000 for AECOM's work over the next nine months or so.
How many more modifications do we anticipate? And because I'm coming back asking for more money?
So Modification Number Eight would provide to get us the end of the project developments phase, and that's when the report would come back to the board to have a discussion about go or no-go on the project.
My other question is this. I heard Commissioner Kemp talk about the Tampa Chamber, I guess, in MacDill Air Force Base supposedly. I think that's what she said in favor of this. My question is, has the Department of Defense given their approval or any sign of approval of a ferry coming on military base property?
I'd like to defer that to Bill. There have been discussions with MacDill previously about using the dock on the east side of the base. There's an existing dock, and that dock would have to be modified. In terms of a formal Department of Defense movement, which is higher up than just the MacDill commander himself, who has to make that, there is not in the record yet, but informal discussions have happened. That's why we have in one of the tasks, that once we get this, this next phase priced out, one of the first tasks is to work with MacDill and Hart on the access to MacDill and the transport within MacDill. Because once people get off the ferry at the MacDill side, they've got to get to their point of, of work. At the same time that we're, you know, Hart is being consulted in terms of how do you get people to the terminal on the east side.
So in four years, we haven't got a sign, number, the, the commander of MacDill Air Force Base will probably not be the person that will approve this on the base. So in four years, you haven't gotten any sign of approval from the Department of Transit, Department of Defense, that this will be allowable, will be allowed on MacDill Air Force Base?
To my knowledge, because we've just come on board with the project, there is, we have not seen a formal approval by the Department of Defense, which would come out of the Pentagon.
So why in the world are we spending all this money?
To, to get to that point, I think, is the.
In four years, you haven't got a sign from, from the Department of Defense at all of allowing this to happen?
We have, we have gotten, there have been discussions of, in which MacDill has encouraged it. What MacDill has not done is said we're, we, we can't go until they get into, a little further into this, go upstairs and from the Pentagon, get the formal orders to go forward within the military.
Commissioner Miller, can I ask Commissioner, former Commissioner Tarantik to come forward and address your question about MacDill and the Department of Defense? Because I do think he has some specific information about that.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, Ed Tarantik, Acreman L. P., representing HMS Ferries and Southswell Development Group. In the first phase, there was a requirement of $100,000 before to establish the circumstances under which MacDill Air Force Base.
You want to pull that, that, that dais up? You're not, I'm not hearing you well.
Oh, sorry.
Pull it up, pull it up.
When we were tasked for some work in 2014, there were discussions with MacDill Air Force Base. This is an officially adopted public-private partnership project by the Department of Defense at MacDill Air Force Base. There are five community-public-private partnerships, and this is one of them. So it's an officially adopted, DOD-approved project. The terms and conditions for accessing the base have to go through the process that Mr. Ferring discussed, meaning that you then have to devise and do an early environmental assessment and then request a lease of the land rights. You can't go do that and get the DOD to approve that until you do the predicate work. There's no way to get around that. So the Department of Defense and MacDill has approved as much of this project as they are legally able to do, and it is an official MacDill Air Force Base public-community partnership project. Thank you. And that, by the way, that transcends base commanders, because that is a DOD approval. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Miller, do you have any further questions?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to say I agree wholeheartedly with what Commissioner White had to say. I, I support the ferry, but I have concerns about the environmental impact. And I think that there could be a solution, or should be a solution, that can be worked out, where we can walk away from this with the assurances that our environmental impact will be minimized. Ed, I got a question of you. Can you come back up? You shouldn't have taken the seat in the back of the room on your issue.
Trying to get out of the line, fire person.
You know, having had to deal with the federal government and the military when I was at the state level, I know how complex it can be. And I also know how they like to see demonstration models at least operating in advance, maybe not the exact model that we would hope to, to have in place, but they like to see things moving in their direction. So I, I get it. I understand that. Hypothetically, the, the, the big concern about initially docking at MacDill is the security issues. What if we were able to come in close, like at the Ballast Point Pier?
MacDill wants us to come in where we're coming in. We have worked through all the security officials at MacDill, and they would like us to come in. And it's a good opportunity to debunk myths and rumors. MacDill has incredible queues outside the gates. Even buses go through the queues.
Right.
Cars and buses can, continue to be a security threat because someone could have a bomb in them. So the security officials at MacDill believe that the ferry, this is what they've represented to us, reduces the, the lines through the gates and has people coming through security on a barge in that area that we talked about. So there's less risk and there's more people going through a higher level of security to get on the base. So this is an approved community partnership project, and HMS Ferries has worked through the, the, the security protocols to go through MacDill Air Force Base, and they want it to come in right at the Davis Conference Center. And then a shuttle will take people around the base. So it helps them immensely with their operational and security needs, because if you can put 2,000 or 3,000 people through that side of the base rather than the gates, it makes life better for everyone, and they actually have to spend less dollars of their operating budgets on processing for security because they're not having to look at vehicles or walk on buses.
Follow-up question. Isn't it true that by better connecting our city Tampa with the city of Tampa or the city of St. Petersburg helps to improve our ability to capitalize on their virtues and them to capitalize on ours from a holistic market perspective and our branding for Come Visit Us Tampa Bay?
It, it is, and furthermore, the economic benefits, as demonstrated by the Cross Bay Ferry, is that the average ferry passenger spent more in each downtown, on businesses in that downtown, than people's going to raise game or lightning games. So whenever the ferry was delivering passengers, local business was, were getting more business. So the Cross Bay Ferry turned out to be a really big benefit for businesses, and it will be even more. I know that's the next agenda item. I think Mayor Kreis.
Yeah, this is, that's F three. Cross Bay Ferry is F three. Now, we're on B 12. We're on the, the big ferry.
All right. I was just responding.
Okay. Any further questions?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Very good. I just, I'm going to make a few last comments.
No, no, I'm still in the queue.
Oh, that's right. Commissioner Miller, I thought maybe, I'm unsure. Sorry, you're recognized.
Couple of things came on my mind. Does, does Department of Defense have to do an environmental impact study on MacDill's land?
Mr. Tarantik, you're getting your miles in today. Do you want to restate your question?
Does the Department of Defense, will they need to do an environmental impact study on their property?
No. Under the lease provisions, like D 4227, whatever, something, something, the project developer will have to do an environmental assessment that's associated with a lease. It's a pretty low standard of review. The MacDill side of this is fairly straightforward, honestly, Commissioner. And I think the base is wanting to know, you heard it before, like, there, it's the eastern side terminus that has more of the issues. No permits, Mr. Ferring can address this better, no permits are going to be pursued under this phase of the contract. But this phase of the contract is going to lay out all the requirements and the hoops you have to go through and document them carefully and say what the risks are and the costs are. But the MacDill side is essentially a lease deal. You lease the property, and under DOD rules, you got to do an environmental assessment.
Okay, I have another question, either Mr. Merrill or maybe of you. Did, did Hart get some, or did Hart request some federal funds for this project? Or are they waiting to get those funds, or we're supposed to tell them yes or no on these federal funds? Producer?
I'll have our consultant respond to that.
And John, I think John Lyons would know that answer also.
Well, this is what we asked the consultant to do for us.
Oh, oh, gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, the, the, you know, the FTA grant, which has existed previously, and the thought is that those monies, if, if, in fact, that FTA grant can be activated in a timely fashion, could be used rather than for the development of the terminal itself, the, the key focus of it. There are, as I mentioned, components of this project that are at MacDill in terms that Hart would be involved with in terms of the transit on MacDill and the, and the potential transit to connect the ferry terminal, wherever it is in the South County, to the population centers. You know, a bus route that goes in. And those, those are the kinds of activities related to this project that could potentially be used, that Hart could use the FTA grant to, to accomplish.
Okay, how long of a period of time does Hart have to let the federal government know they want those dollars? I mean.
I think they have about 18 more months is what I, my understanding.
I'm not quite sure of that.
But it, you know, that's, that's one of the reasons we're trying to move forward with this phased project that we're doing right now with the modification, is to get to a decision, really, early in 2019. I mean, time is, to us at least, we've been given direction, time is of the essence. Let's get this thing decided one way or the other. And, and in that case, you wouldn't, you wouldn't void your ability to use that FTA grant.
Okay, thank you. Just final comments. I've been all in on this project since day one. And I've spent hours in South County, talking to many of the residents, having public meetings down there. The benefits are certainly, they're, they're really great for the community down there because they really don't have any form of alternate transportation other than their car. And this gives them another, another mode of transportation to really get from South County all the way into downtown or South Tampa. And especially for the service people, because for them to use, most of the enlisted men live in South County because it's affordable. And for them to get on the Crosstown Expressway is, you know, sometimes not economically available to them. And I think that this really provides them, because the fare would be covered through the federal government, and it would give them that option that they need to get to work fast and quick and still be within their budget. I think this has always been a game changer for South County, always. And for the service people, for MacDill, for everybody, it won't just be used for. It won't just be used for McDill, it will be used on off-hours for probably recreation on weekends, different things like that. But this is certainly the next step we should take. I think you've heard loud and clear about the site. I still think there are other options for sites, so I hope that you will come back here with a site that we can all be happy with and not have these environmental concerns because there are. I was, I was in the legislature when we dedicated that whole area down there as conservation lands. I was standing with Swift Mud when they did that, and it is absolutely beautiful. I wish we could use it more for recreation. I think we need to do that, but, you know, we'll address that as you get the project more filled out. So, with that, we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Chris, to approve item B-12. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Miller voted no.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
That takes us to item G2, your 11:15 time certain.
Commissioners, I can introduce this item. This was actually a result of Commissioner Miller, unless you would like to do so, Commissioner Miller.
Commissioner Miller, would you like to introduce it?
Well, I want to refer it back to you, but I'll open up. A couple of weeks ago, well, before, in our last meeting, I was watching Channel 8, and Mark Douglas, who was in the audience with us today, brought forth an issue dealing with a roofer that was basically utilizing Hillsborough County Government, I thought it was a logo, but it wasn't a logo, but it had on the top of a notice Hillsborough County approved, a government-approved property assessed clean energy, and that that person was passing this out to really vulnerable people, elderly, the handicapped, minorities who don't understand that your roof, I'm gonna read it to you. Says, "This notice indicates that the portfolio number of the property and the property assessed clean energy, which is PACE approval or funding of your property." And it goes on to say, "You are receiving this notice because major roof concerns were visibly noted this week. Your roof is missing shingles and is damaged. As a coordinator of a county-approved program, we're gonna prove anyone with zero down or zero payment until March 2009 regardless of your credit score or employment status." And it has the notice that says Hillsborough County Government, and beside that, I think it's the federal government logo of Eagles. This person was utilizing the county's name illegally, was telling them that as an approved county agency that they need to get their roofs repaired. One lady, I think, spent $5,000, went into debt of her own money to get her roof repaired when she really didn't need it. When I saw this, I was appalled. I also noticed that in Pasco County, Mike Fasano, one of our former colleagues, ran that person out of Pasco County, but running them out of county for me was not the right thing to do. They needed to be put in jail for the atrocities that they did or doing to these people. So, I came back and asked our staff, would they look into this, and Ms. Beck and her staff had brought back a report, and I'm gonna ask her to go into more detail on this because I think that if we're gonna let this happen in Hillsborough, well, we're not gonna let this happen in Hillsborough County because we're gonna, I think we need to put some teeth into our laws to make sure that this continues, especially with someone utilizing Hillsborough County Government as an approved agency of a program that we thought was a good program, and putting this on the backs of the less fortunate, those who don't have the money to get these things done and then go out and have to borrow money to get a roof, when their roof probably is in good shape. And this is done by someone who has a crook, who hired crooks to do this with them, I think they need to be put in jail. So, I'm gonna let you go further on that, Ms. Beck, if you don't mind.
Yes, Commissioner. We did look into this and found that there were a number of statutes that could be implicated that could imply that crimes were committed. We forwarded that and worked very closely with our consumer protection staff, and we also looked into the implications with our PACE program and advised staff on that as well, and assisted with a letter to our PACE representative to inform them that it was a breach of our contract to utilize the county's name in any of this kind of advertising. Those actions were taken, and we have Eric Olson from the Consumer Protection Department who can give you more background because they had actually been aware of these issues and working on them diligently when this came up, and also we have representatives of the PACE program here to address any of your questions.
Okay. Very good. Madam Chair?
Who's next? Would you like to come forward? Yes, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Eric Olson, Consumer Protection Services Division Director under the Consumer and Veteran Services Department. So, we began receiving complaints about a contractor, Summit Woodworks LLC, late last month. We received one formal complaint, and additionally began to receive copies of flyers that they were distributing out in the community to county residents. We opened an investigation. The contractor was cooperative, and so we entered into an assurance of voluntary compliance with them, which stipulated that they would no longer use Hillsborough County, its name, any logo with regards to Hillsborough County, even though they weren't using our logo at the time, and also that they would refrain from any unfair deceptive business practices in their advertising. We received one formal complaint and began to also receive copies of flyers that showed that there were additional copies being circulated. We received four total flyers. Subsequent to our investigation and the assurance of voluntary compliance, we received two additional ones. Based on that, we have referred the matter to the state attorney's office for their review and any criminal prosecution that they may decide to take with regards to the false advertising. That's basically where we're at currently. I remain available to answer any questions about our operation that I can for you today.
Okay. No other questions?
No.
And would you like the man from PACE?
Yes.
To come forward?
Thank you.
And with, I don't know who this is, so...
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Kate Westner, Y Green Energy Fund.
Okay.
The only update I can share with you is that we have terminated this contractor in our program.
So, you've terminated that one contractor?
Yes.
Have you put any steps in place to prevent this type of fraudulent business coming forth and doing business with you? I mean, you terminated that contract, but do you have anything in place to rectify the opportunity of someone else coming in there doing the same thing?
Yes, Commissioner. We have a contractor participation agreement with a code of conduct for contractors. We'd be happy to share that with you, where this contractor violated a number of different provisions of the terms of the contract, so that is why they've been terminated.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I guess my question is, if he had gotten thrown out of Pasco and he came here, did you know that?
Madam Chair, I believe he was operating in a number of different communities, all at the same time. I don't think he was, that's my understanding.
I think it's just that preventive measure that you would have in place within your company to keep people like that from working out in the public.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Miller?
Madam Chair to Ms. Beck, in your report that you gave us, the criminal charges outline a number of things here, dealing with the Florida statute 817.41, which prohibits misleading advertising, declares such advertising to be fraudulent, and they can serve up, get up to sentence of one year of fine or up to $1,000. The other one is dealing with statute 25, 825.103. This statute would take elderly and disabled persons from exploitation by persons in possession of trust, of trust and confidence. If we, if a person in this county or company in this county continues to do those, or we catch another one doing this, what's, what's the teeth in our laws, or do we have to depend on state statute to make sure that their charge is brought against that person?
Well, because that's the purview of the state attorney, our longstanding practice is that when we have anything that involves potential criminal activity, we have a very good relationship with the state attorney's office, and we forward all of our evidence and information, but then it's really within their purview to review it all, and they will, I'm sure, look at all of these statutes and also the other activity around the state and then take appropriate action.
Okay. I just want to thank you for bringing this report. I just want to make sure that in Hillsborough County, we're not gonna run them out of Hillsborough County. We're gonna lock them up in Hillsborough County for the things that they do. I mean, to pray on the elderly, the disabled, and those who are less fortunate and may not have the wherewithal to understand that, you know, they see a document like this flyer, it looks like official government document, and they're saying that something's wrong with their roof, they're gonna come forth and say, "I better get something done because I don't want to lean put on my property," or whatever the case may be. And I just want to make sure that if we run into this type of thing in Hillsborough County again, that we have the teeth in our county, along with, I guess we'll have to take it to the state attorney's office, and I know your office can write the right thing to send to the state attorney's office, that this does not happen. The person who does this kind of thing will have to pay for it.
Yes, sir.
If I could just, Commissioner Miller, add something to that, and this really goes to Commissioner Murman's question. When the board approved the contract with PACE, it was the understanding that this is PACE's responsibility, it's not the county's responsibility, and I think I would suggest to the board that you would want to know from PACE going forward, what policies, procedures, and actions are they putting in place to safeguard this community, because it's their responsibility, they asked for this contract, and I've yet to see from them, what are those safeguards, what's their internal process, how are they gonna police this?
That was my question to the young lady, that was up here.
I don't think she really answered it.
She really didn't. Did she leave?
Commissioner Miller, when contractors apply to be part of our program, there is a vetting process that they go through, so we verify that they're licensed with your local licensing authority, with the state DBPR, we check the Better Business Bureau, a number of different things. In our contractor participation agreement, it clearly lays out, there is no deceptive marketing techniques used, misrepresentations of being a county program, all of these provisions are clearly in this. We provide training for them upfront, so there's a lot of different provisions within our contracts that this contractor specifically is in violation of. When these things are brought to our attention, either through a consumer or through a government partner, when we are made aware, then we can investigate, do our research, and make a determination of where that contractor stands. So, that is how we provide that level of oversight in the contractor management program in PACE.
We have some others in the queue, I'll come back.
Okay. You know, and I just have to say, I was the one that brought PACE to the board, and I fought for it because I thought it was a great option, but I wanted assurance that we would never be held liable or be at risk for anything, and then this happens, and I just, you know, I just hope it doesn't happen again, because if it does, we're gonna probably have to figure out another way to, in this relationship, I don't know where it would go, but I would say it probably wouldn't be a long-term relationship at that point, because we do not want to risk our relationship with our homeowners, and we heard from the realtors, the realtors were not, are not happy, they don't like PACE, per se, because of these type of problems they think would happen. So, we're giving you the benefit of the doubt here, but please, do not put us at risk because we don't want to be held liable for anything, because people look for the big person to go to, not you. They're gonna say it's us.
Well, and I'm particularly disturbed that you would say that you're relying on us to tell you when things go wrong. If that's what we need to do, then I need to staff up, which wasn't the original deal. So, I think you need to provide this board with written documentation that shows how you're gonna proactively police this, not just rely on a promise and an agreement that you have with the contractor, because obviously that didn't work, and this is a contractor that had been, had committed fraudulent acts before, and you should have picked up on it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I understand what Ms. Merrill is saying.
I know.
I asked you to come back to me, but I have two motions, Mr. Merrill, at the end of the board discussion.
Okay. We'll call on you right when we're done. So, Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. Moving back to the bad apple that calls this discussion, Commissioner Miller has posed the question or idea, and maybe this is gonna be part of his motion when he gets to it, of whether or not we need to strengthen our local laws with respect to deceptive advertising, inappropriately using the county logo, things like that. I think one important piece of information that would help us to get there and understand whether or not we need to strengthen our local laws is to know what the decision of the state attorney is ultimately and what's been referred to him. So, I'd love to see a report back to this board on the state attorney's decision on what's been referred to him.
Absolutely. We can do that for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I thought maybe the motion was going to deal with that, but I had, in fact, the same concern that we hear back after the state attorney said we can appropriately decide what, how we should move forward. I just also had one more question of Ms. Weisner. I'm just wondering when any of your subcontractors that work with you, as you said, the code of conduct, but I would think that you would be approving or even working with them for any written materials that they would leave, and so I just, the fact that that went out and was passed out, you know, I would think that you would pre-approve anything that was left with people under your program.
Commissioner, yes, you are correct. We do require that any marketing materials in regards to PACE are approved by us. We see it in writing. I will provide a copy of our contractor participation agreement, as well as our code of conduct to all of the commissioners, as well as staff, for your review, so you can see in detail, and we can set up meetings to follow up and hear your concerns after you've had some time to look at that. But we do believe that we shine a light on any issues with contractors that may be operating in the county outside of PACE, and so when they use PACE, when it is a public-private partnership type of a program that we're in, that that is when these issues are elevated to your attention. Without that, you may not have heard about these contractors necessarily. They could have been performing all types of business practices that were, you know, not fulfilling, they're part of our agreement, but may have flown under the radar otherwise. So, we do believe that although, you know, consumers may think that it is something that they're gonna call their county commissioner on, but ultimately it is on us to try to resolve between the homeowner, contractor, hold those contractors' feet to the fire.
Well, I'm just a little confused. So, let's say the next roofer comes in, and they were, had a paper that they were leaving with people. Do you require that they give that to you first so you can review it?
Every, every marketing material they use to solicit business in the PACE program, yes. We require that we see it in writing, we review it, and approve it.
So, this...
We did not see that.
Okay. So, they did, they did not comply, did not show you what they were...
Correct.
Did, do you know in this particular case if this contractor submitted anything to you for what they were passing out?
I do not have that on my files yet, but I can look into that and provide you an answer on that, of any marketing materials we may have received from them prior.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two motions at this particular point in time. The first motion is to receive the joint report from the county administrator and the county attorney's office regarding this issue, and within that motion, I'm asking that the county attorney bring back the information concerning the state attorney that Commissioner White was referencing in his conversation. That's the first motion I have.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner White on item G2s. And Commissioner Chris, would you discuss, you're in the queue, you're recognized for a discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I have some questions, the young lady, where'd she go?
Hi, Commissioner.
First of all, you're doing good at reiterating your points, so you can relax a little bit. I can sense a little bit of stress there on your part. It's very difficult being up there at that podium, but you're handling everything appropriately, so feel confident about that. I supported PACE early on because I saw it as an opportunity to provide a chance for folks that maybe cash, you know, have cash restraints to be able to make necessary repairs to their home to help prevent any future more costly expenses. I guess the questions I have is, you know, I agree with some of the comments that were made regarding maybe we need to have stricter rules and guidelines and penalties for those that would abuse the privilege to participate in the PACE program, meaning the contractors that take advantage. Sometimes having stricter penalties will help deter, you know, any future criminal activity. But to that regard, when you sign up a contractor to participate in the program, is there a formal screening?
Yes, sir, there is, and we'd be happy to go over this in detail with all of you. Yes, there is a screening involved. Yes, there is a screening involved, it's multi-layered in terms of checking the Better Business Bureau, DBPR, in terms of complaints, and they have to get permits, so if you all were with...
Once that is done, if you find that an applicant has had multiple complaints, or unexplainable complaints, or unsatisfactoryly explainable complaints, do you allow them in?
There is probably a different tiered system of how they evaluate that. I can get more in-depth for that and provide that to you, Commissioner. I would think it's evaluated on a case-by-case basis, but in this particular contractor's issue, none of this showed up originally, because he was not the one that was actually, I think, in some of the news stories, was highlighted. It was his affiliates who, under our contract, he should have registered, they should have went under training and screening with us as well, but they were not. He omitted them from registration process.
Well, I mean, we've got a rigid licensure process for doctors, MDs, and yet there are a few, from time to time, that mispractice.
Yes.
And have to be removed from the ability to practice medicine. That happens. And it happens in every discipline and everywhere. There are always going to be those bad apples. What we need to do, I think, is maybe improve on our due diligence. And Mr. Merrill, I believe that should be done upfront and at the end. I agree at the end, we need to have tougher penalties on those who would take advantage, but upfront, I think we need to take a closer look at the screening process and how we can tighten that up.
Well, but that wasn't the deal.
That's not us.
I'm not saying we should participate in that, I'm saying that we should probably
work that into our agreement with them.
Oh, absolutely.
To ensure that a higher standard of screening is being done at a level that reduces our exposure.
Right, I agree with that, yeah, absolutely.
And Commissioner, we'd be happy to work with you on what that would look like, and explain to you our processes, and look for ways we can improve.
Hello, Commissioners. Richard Rubenstein with Management and Budget. I just want to go on the record as stating, when we entered into the contracts with each of the four PACE providers, there is a clause in each contract, that's an indemnification clause. They've agreed to fully indemnify the county against any exposure. So I just wanted to make clear to you that as a county, as, from a purely legal perspective, we have no risk directly, understanding that the public will look to us, expecting us to have some sort of a feel for this. I think what you're saying is absolutely right, in that when we went through the initial vetting process, when they all applied to be PACE providers, we reviewed their processes, and we found them adequate. Of course, anything can be strengthened, and unfortunately, whether a vendor's associated with a PACE provider or doing their own business, there will be bad eggs. And unfortunately, that's just the nature of the beast. The fact that, in my opinion, the PACE provider took immediate action in terminating the vendor from their approved vendor list, is, at least on the back end, a good thing.
Thank you for that clarification. We appreciate that. Okay, there's no one else in the queue. We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner White, on to receive the joint report on item G2. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And Commissioner Miller, you're recognized for your second motion.
Thank you. Let me ask a question of either Mr. Merrill or someone else on the staff. Would it be appropriate for PACE to bring forth at our next meeting in July, all of their policies, procedures, of vetting and screening of their particular company that come before them to do this work?
I think it would be very helpful, yeah.
Okay. I make a motion that at our June 18th, July 18th meetings, that PACE brings forth all of the policies, documentations, whatever they have, and what they utilize to screen and vet their particular contractors, they utilize within their business to bring those things back, bring that information back to us at our July 18th meeting in totality.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Chris, in relation to item G2. Without further discussion, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Great. I think the lesson to be learned from this is, don't prey on the vulnerable in Hillsborough County, because we'll find out about it eventually. So let's just make sure that we pay attention.
Then our last time certain is your 11:30 item F3, and this is a presentation from St. Petersburg Mayor Rick Kreisman.
Oh, thank you, and I'm sorry we had to keep you waiting. It's important, I am, you probably enjoyed the discussion, listened to it, because I know, I don't, do you have PACE in St. Petersburg?
We do.
So you probably...
So I appreciate your...
And you're next.
Appreciate your discussion and thoroughness.
Great, thank you for coming.
Looking out for your residents in the way you just did. Madam Chair, members of the commission, it's a pleasure to be in front of you once again. And today I am pleased to present what we're calling Cross Bay Ferry 2.0. And let me see if I do this right. Nope, I didn't. Okay.
It's in the right area, right there.
Right there, thank you. So if you remember, our original Cross Bay Ferry pilot project was really a collaborative experiment undertaken between the cities of St. Pete and Tampa, and the counties of Pinellas and Hillsborough. And this was a pilot that we did to try and determine whether passenger ferry service could be sustainable in the future as a viable regional transit option. And I want to thank the commissioners for your participation and your faith in the pilot. In particular, Madam Chair, for your leadership, we had a lot of discussions along the way to get to that point, to get this thing off the ground. And I'm going to present some of the statistics of how it did, and what we want to talk about going forward. And you may remember that the ferry docked in the Pinellas Basin area in St. Petersburg, and in the Tampa Convention Center area over in Tampa. One of the things that we looked at was where were the riders coming from? And the statistic was, I thought, really fascinating. It was pretty evenly split, 50% from St. Pete and 50% from Tampa, with 90% of the passengers identifying themselves as Tampa Bay residents. And we had more than 72% of all Pinellas and Hillsborough County zip codes represented in their use of the ferry. So this was clearly a transit option that the residents in Hillsborough and Pinellas County made good use of. We, as you see from the numbers, once the ferry kicked off and we were testing it in November, we gradually saw a pretty significant increase, starting in February, March, and April, as more and more people got used to riding it, and more and more people became aware of it, with our highest ridership number of over 10,268 in the month of April. Now, this other, this slide was, is really, I think, informative for us as we move forward with 2.0, which is, what were people really using the ferry for? And we found that two-thirds of those passengers were considered non-commuters, so they were weekend service riders, or evening while, a third of the passengers were for the weekday service. And if you remember, we tested a, which is really the whole purpose of the pilot, to see whether people would ride it to go from St. Pete to Tampa in the mornings for work. And while there was ridership numbers, what I think the numbers really demonstrated to us is, if you don't have frequency of service and rely, you know, it's hard to get people to utilize that service for that purpose. This one I kind of included in this presentation more, because I thought it was interesting to see how many people actually brought their bikes onboard, and then used that as a mode of transit once they got to their destination. And as you see, between November and April, there was over 900, with a steady increase month to month, with, again, April being the highest number of people at 234 bringing their bikes on. Most of those were privately owned, but what was nice is that on both sides of the bay, we have Bike Share with the same company that's the provider of that Bike Share service. So if you were a rider in St. Pete, and you took the ferry over and you brought your bike and you rode it around Tampa, you could leave it in Tampa, because it was the same service. And then what did people do once they got to their destination? And what we found is that 75% were going to eat, 30% went to one of our great museums on both sides of the bay, 28% shopped, 14% went to a sporting event, but 19% said they rode the ferry, simply because they wanted to experience riding the ferry and enjoy the beautiful views of our two communities. And what I always love telling people is, if you rode it in the day, it's one thing, but ride it at night, because the view of the two downtowns in the evening is very different. And if you're not a boat owner, you don't get the opportunity to really appreciate the, really, the beauty of Hillsborough and Pinellas Counties from the water. And both, both the communities and the waterfronts are just spectacular, and it really gave people who don't have the ability to own a boat, the opportunity to experience that view that they otherwise wouldn't have had. This next slide was also, I thought, really interesting, because what we wanted to see was, it's one thing to ride the ferry from Tampa to St. Pete, or St. Pete to Tampa, but are you riding it back, or are you taking some other mode of transit to get back? And what we found is 75% returned via the ferry. And so the majority of the folks who did ride took it both ways, going back and forth. Why did people even ride it? And we found that two-thirds of those surveyed stated that their trip was really induced because it was an opportunity to do something different, and that they might not have gone across the bay one way or the other, had this service not been available. A third stated that they used it as an alternative means of transit. And certainly what our hope is, is as, with a ferry service, and as people get more and more used to it, more and more people will use it as their mode of transit, getting them off the roads, freeing up the Howard Franklin, freeing up the Gandy, freeing up Courtney Campbell, and the backups that we all see seemingly increasing on a daily basis. This is, to me, in some ways, the most important slide, though, is, you know, we want to know really, are we, were we getting our money's worth? And I'm going to cut right to the chase, it's just the last paragraph on that slide. We had four partner governments, each one put in $350,000, so it's about 1.3 million was our investment. The impact of that brought back to our two communities $1.6 million, as far as an impact to the local economy. That's money that was spent in our two communities that might not have otherwise been spent. So when you think that you had a $1.3 million investment, and by the way, we, if you remember, we each, each partner government got money back, roughly $42,000 back still, and yet we still had a $1.6 million investment. It's, this is one mode of transit that actually had an impact economically, as we would hope, on our communities. And so for a 1.3 million investment, or actually less than that, because of what we got back, we saw a $1.6 million economic impact. We also wanted to compare how the ferry rates versus other modes of transit, as far as cost goes. Our cross bay ferry was less expensive to operate on a per-mile basis than the service in Seattle. Quite frankly, the reality is, is probably because we only had one boat, versus the multiples that they have. But the next stat is the interesting one, and when you look at the per-mile cost of operating our ferry versus our bus service, while it's a little bit more expensive, the fare box ratio was significantly more. So we were receiving more back at 41% versus the 24% for PSTA and for HART. And then we also compared travel times, and from January to February of 2017, which was what we recorded time-wise, on 4th Street Gandy, Bridge section with Selman, 275 Gandy with Selman, 4th Street I-75, or I-275 Howard Franklin, and then the Franklin Bridge. If you look at the longest drive times, the ferry, with the exception of the 4th Street 275, outperformed all of those longest drive times. So even though it took 50 minutes, it still ended up being less than what someone experienced when they were stuck in traffic, and certainly it was a much more pleasant experience, being stuck in, being on a boat for 50 minutes than sitting on the Howard Franklin Bridge in traffic where you're not moving. And then we also looked at, what did we learn from this project? And what we saw was that there was clearly a demand for ferry service in the Tampa Bay area, that the commuter service is viable when you price it right, that fare box recovery can be higher than traditional surface transit, that there is an economic impact from this mode of transportation, and that people, they enjoyed it, and they were pleased to have been able to take part in the service. So our last two slides are, where do we go from here? Let me first, again, congratulate you and thank you for your leadership when it comes to alternative modes of transit, and what you're trying to do on the ferry service from South Tampa, or South Hillsborough to MacDill. We see that as a, really, the way to get ferry service up and running in the Tampa Bay region, and so I applaud you all on your leadership. Our hope of, obviously, would be that if that service does get up and running, that we see the opportunity for the connectivity between downtowns at St. Pete and downtowns Tampa, or even West Shore and other areas in Hillsborough County on nights and weekends. But while that's happening, we think this gives us a really good opportunity to create a bridge, and fill that gap, so that people still can get used to riding some type of ferry service, so that once your system is up and running, we'll already have a ridership that's used to taking it, used to riding it, and we'll take full advantage of it. And so certainly, we're looking to all four partners, again, to show the regional support for bringing back a seasonal ferry service, which would be from November through April. We, as a city of St. Petersburg, we went out to RFP, which we were required to do because the other service was a pilot basis. After the RFP, we had selected HMS as a result of that RFP, based on the pricing that we received, and some grant dollars that we had received from the state. We believe that no more than $150,000 would be required from each of the partner governments, which is obviously substantially less than what we came to you all with for the pilot. We, again, would have benchmarks in there as a part of the agreement, so that once those are reached, everything over that would be returned on an equal basis, based on the amounts contributed by the partners. And our expectation would be that, once again, we would see money coming back after the season runs to each of the partner governments that take place, or take, participate in this. St. Pete City Council, last week, voted in support of moving this project forward, and committed up to $150,000 for the service. And certainly, as Commissioner Chris was talking about earlier, during your earlier discussion, the federal government and Department of Defense, we know that they want to see projects that are up and running and are working. And if they're going to make that kind of investment and allow that to happen, they'd like to see that it works. This is a great example, and will continue to allow us to demonstrate, there is a need and a desire for ferry service in the Tampa Bay region, that we all have the ability and can do it again, of working regionally, and doing things that are best for our region as a whole. And I think it sends a strong message that other areas of the state of Florida and the country have been better than we have in the past, but I think we're catching up and we will surpass them, and once we do, they all better look out, because the Tampa Bay area is going to be a force to be reckoned with when we're all working together. So I thank you again for the opportunity to present. I'm happy to answer any questions, and would love to have some support from this body. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mayor Kreisman.
Thank you so much, Mayor Christman. And I'm going to pass the gavel and make a motion. I did ask Mr. Merrill, during the budget briefings, to include $150,000 for Hillsborough County in the budget this year. We have not voted on that budget yet, but, you know, so it is preliminary, but I would like to make a motion to show our support for the cross-bay ferry. It was a huge success and I think we get a big return on it. Ticket sales were strong, marketing was strong, and it shows a huge foundation for the real ferry project that's to go to MacDill. So I think we've been tested and we passed the test with flying colors, but this is about really offering something to our citizens that's not just in a car or Uber or anything. It just, it's making use of our water. We don't use our waterways. So I'm making a motion to, for our county commission to show our support for the cross-bay ferry, and that's it.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Ms. Kemp, discussion.
Commissioner Kemp is in the queue.
You're in the queue? Commissioner Kemp, you're up.
I just want to thank you, Mayor Christman, for such a good presentation and for having been a leader in this for our region in bringing the ferry to, to us so that we could use it to, to cross the bay and do the last six months to see the success of the ferry. As I mentioned earlier, projections were for $35,000 at the highest, and those projections during the last pilot project were exceeded. We reached $40,000. Also, I also, and I noticed you did that in the presentation, I found that to be a really nice benefit when I started riding the ferry and seeing pictures posted, seeing bicycles, all filling the deck sometimes. I mean, I was just amazed because I had really thought so much about it. And as you have stated, and I don't know whether coast bikes got to open over in St. Petersburg after or before our ferry project or during the pilot project, but now that we have it on both sides and both areas are getting very, building in bike trails and all that, I just think it's even more exciting in, in terms of that. You know, and as I've stated before, it, it is really a paradigm shift, I think, and a really great thing for us. We see all these other communities, and I think about Seattle, and I think about New York, and I was, I, as I said before, they got 19 new ferries in New York. They ordered them first at 150 seaters. Now they're starting with 350 instead. I sat there in New York, looking actually at the Staten Island Ferry. I'd never thought about how big the Staten Island Ferry was compared to what we have here, and I'm still not sure how many people it holds, but of course, that's been the traditional ferry in New York. And they go every half hour, 24 hours a day, and take an amazing 70,000 people a day back and forth to work and to everything else, which is, you know, just that single ferry is, you know, way more than our entire transit system, for sure, and close to what both of our transit systems do when you look at that. So, so ferries are a wonderful way to travel. I know you had mentioned about speed, but I think when you're on a ferry, and what I found is you want to enjoy it. And also, one of the things that are making millennials more interested in all kinds of available transit, and many people our age too, is, is, is one, the fact that is that people are getting, you know, are less tolerant, I think, and looking for other opportunities and sitting in traffic. But of course, we are able to look at our, our phones and our other devices, and it provides us not only a time to enjoy how beautiful it is and to see something different. I don't usually get access to a boat, but also, if you're interested in just following up on your work or doing whatever it is, we found that many more people are interested in transit options these days to free them up so that they can do that. So I thank you for your presentation. I'm very much in support of this. I'm very excited. I cannot tell you, quite seriously, how many times I've been asked, over and over again. I got stopped just walking down the street in Tampa, "Hey, Commissioner, what, what's, what happened to the ferry? When's it coming back?" And I know there's just a lot of, lot of interest and love for it. So thank you so much, and, and I'd like to see it happen again.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. And before I get started, I want to let people know, I'm not against ferries. I really am not. I have seen them work in New York. I saw one in Alaska when I was there, and I can't tell you the number of cars they pulled on the bottom of that ferry to take it across from one side of wherever they were going. I mean, it must have been 200, 300 cars they put in that ferry. So I'm not against it. It's just the fact that the matter is, I have some questions about how productive it's going to be in taking cars off the road in our area, how it's going to affect the entire county instead of one part of the county. But let me ask you something about what you have here. Last year, you said it was a little over 40,000 people to utilize a ferry. How many months did we have that ferry last time?
It started in November and ended in April. So it's six months.
Six months.
Yes.
Then you, you put a chart there that showed that it increased over a period of time. I take it that weather was a factor in there, but was there a factor also about the, the price of riding the ferry?
Yeah, there was a number of, I think, factors that played in. The first month, you saw large numbers because we were doing a lot of testing, so there was a lot of free ferry rides and things of that sort. Then we think weather did play a little bit of a part in it, especially in January. But yeah, we tested pricing points and played around with prices, offering different deals. We've been working on the price points because to me, that's really critical, is, you know, from everything I know about transit, it's frequency, reliability, and price are the, the three big drivers of, no pun intended, of people utilizing transit. And so getting a price point that makes sense is really important to us. And so we are looking at the pricing that we did in the last two months in particular, but in the last month, and utilizing that as a starting point, but even tweaking that. So we're looking at offering lower rates for students, for veterans, and seniors, and for children that are lower than what we, than what we had before when we ran it during the pilot.
Are we, are we looking at November this year to April?
November to April again. And really, the reason that, that's the timeframe that we've selected is this boat's coming from New England, and no one wants to ride a ferry in New England in January and February. And so those boats are just sitting, which gives us an opportunity to, to get that boat and bring it down here for, for use.
Is it the same-sized boats we utilized last year?
Yes, we're looking at the same-sized boat. One of the things that we are not going to do that we did the last time with the pilot is to run a early morning, like a 7:00 or 7:30 trip over to Tampa from St. Pete. That doesn't make sense to us. You know, we wanted to test it, to see if people would do that as a way of, you know, going to work and not having to drive. But again, what we know is with only one boat, you're, you cannot get people to rely on that mode of transit to replace their, their vehicle for purposes of commuting until we have four or more boats, until you're talking about, you know, wait times of no more than a half an hour, but even 15 minutes in between. If you were to miss one, it's not going to be effective. And so we're really going to be keying in more on the, the times where we saw greatest ridership, weekends, nights, and even lunchtimes.
Okay, I haven't made up my mind on this yet. I hope somebody asks some more questions so I can make my mind up as we go.
They don't. You'll have to decide quick. Okay.
Okay, who else is in the queue?
Nobody.
Well, I'll go ahead and speak then. Mayor, appreciate your leadership on this. As a frequent user myself, my daughter, my wife and I, we have enjoyed it. We have not taken it for commuter purposes. We have done it for recreation, and we have done it during the day and in the evening. You can't be more right when you say how beautiful it is at night. You know, working in the advertising business, I understand the importance of having options in building brand. And this is good for Pinellas, this is good for Hillsborough, this is good for St. Petersburg, this is good for Tampa, because it allows us to join together, pool our resources, and market ourselves as one destination.
Yep.
I'm here in Hillsborough, and I'm taking every opportunity to say, come to Hillsborough and visit the Dolly Museum, just as you would say, come to St. Petersburg and enjoy the convention center.
Absolutely.
Sometimes, initially on, it takes time to, to build user, use, and to build recognition and to build a following, but you've got to start somewhere, and this is the beginning. And I wholeheartedly support this, and I love using it, especially on my daddy day with daughter, because it makes it easy to do something that we both enjoy. And I'd like to thank you and our mayor here in Tampa for both your leadership on this.
Mr. Chair, if I may make one last comment. It, it, I think the statistics, what they showed is that as time went on, we saw ridership increase, which really says to me that the more people became aware of it, the more they, they tested it themselves, the more they enjoyed it. And I, I will tell you, it was an incredibly pleasant experience for my wife and, and I to ride over to a Lightning game on the ferry, have a glass of wine as we're going over, walk five minutes and be in Emily Arena, walk five minutes, be back on the boat and be back on shore, not have to worry about parking, not have to worry about, you know, traffic, and, and being able to have a glass of wine and enjoy the sights.
Tailgate in the middle of Tampa Bay.
Absolutely. So I, I'm very optimistic that we will see those numbers continue to climb if we do this again. And, you know, my, my hope would be that until you all are able to get your permanent service up and running, that this is something that we can do every season. I'm, I'm the same as you, Commissioner Kemp. All I hear, have is people coming up to me is, where's the ferry? When's the ferry coming back? Please tell me you're bringing the ferry back. Thank you all for your consideration.
Well, and, I mean, you just give such a strong business case for it, so I really appreciate it. And I think it just promotes ecotourism and makes use of our waterways, promotes, it actually produces jobs. So, okay, so we have a motion.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Thank you, Commissioner Murman, for your leadership on this as well. Clerk will open the vote, the board, and we'll vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Hey. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Christman, and thank you, Commissioner Miller. It's a very ferry day. Okay.
So we do, we do have the answer on public hearing, D4.
G4, because we have so many people waiting. I'd like to really get that thing care of.
D4.
That'd be great. Okay, G4.
D4.
Very, D, D4, I'm sorry.
For the record, again, Mary Helen Ferris. I did some research on my own, and the restriction in Chapter 105 on political activity relates to judicial offices and not your basic nonpartisan offices. And it says, "No political party or partisan political organization shall endorse, support, or assist any candidate in a campaign for judicial offices." In contrast, there's an opinion from the Division of Elections that says you cannot campaign on the basis of your party affiliation, but you can list your experience, such as executive committee of such and such party. So you can even say that. I followed up with a telephone conversation with Ron Lebasky, who is in Tallahassee. He represents the State Association of Supervisors. I've known and worked with Ron for over 20 years, and he verified that it is just the judicial offices. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, thank you very much. So we are back on board discussion. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. So I, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I think I've heard you state that candidates, if, if the, if the constitutional offices are nonpartisan, candidates would be able to visit with the local parties, the local party clubs. They would be able to support partisan campaigns, should they choose to. Okay. I'll just say, for the record, that, that this is a tough vote for me. Just last night, I was the proud recipient of the local Republican Party's Governor Bob Martinez Good Government Award. I've worked hard to earn the trust, respect, and admiration of my fellow conservatives. By the same token, because of my work on common sense local issues like better growth management and supporting conservation efforts, I also feel as if I've been able to earn the trust, respect, and admiration of those across the aisle. We've learned just now, on the record, that nonpartisan constitutional officer candidates would still be able to visit with the parties, disseminate information about their campaigns, give speeches about their campaigns, et cetera. They would also continue to have the ability to lend support to partisan races. Certain policy initiatives, amending the charter being one of them, require a referendum. In the past, I felt strongly about certain initiatives that require a referendum and have staked out a position that the referendum requirement doesn't automatically mean just give it to the people. Rather, I've taken the position that the county commission either wants it and moves forward to the next step of a referendum, or it doesn't want it, and there is therefore no referendum sent to the people. I know I'm going to take some licks for this one, but like Commissioner Higginbotham has, has stated, I'm going to ask those that have supported me for these three and a half years or so that I've been on the county commission, and I hope beyond, to look at my overall record as a commissioner these three and a half years, and, and I hope beyond. But I do not have a strong policy position on this one. It's not my initiative, it's not me that's asking for it, but in deference to my colleague that feels strongly about this, if a motion is put on the floor to send this to the people in a referendum, I will support it.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
No, I just want to restate what I, what I said earlier, as, as far as our experience suggests that nonpartisan candidates can speak at local parties. I know school board candidates, city council candidates, mayoral candidates have all been to the, to the REC and the other clubs. I'm assuming it's the same way with, with the Democratic Party, so not surprised to hear Mary Helen confirm that nonpartisan candidates can speak at local, local clubs.
Very good. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Well, is there a motion on the floor at this point in time?
Yes, Commissioner Higginbotham, seconded by Commissioner Hagan.
Well, you know, hearing what Ms. Ferris has said concerning the mere fact that nonpartisan candidates can participate with local partisan committees, I still say, if it's, if it's not broke, why are we trying to fix it? There's nothing that has, as far as I know, been said out there that we need to have nonpartisan constitutional officers. Well, this body is a constitution officer. We're set forth in the constitution. So therefore, what is good for the goose is good for the gander. So I'm going to make an amendment to the motion that it reads, conduct a public hearing, we know what that is, and at the end where it says, and the clerk of the court be conducted as nonpartisan, that we add the county commission as also nonpartisan. That's my motion, amendment to the motion.
Okay, there is an amendment on the floor by Commissioner Miller.
I'm sorry, hold on. There's no motion on the floor?
Oh, there, there was a motion on the floor. Yes.
No, I didn't.
No.
Oh, yeah, to continue it.
Oh, but, but we did continue it till now, and so we're back on the main motion. Yeah, we're back on the main motion. So, okay, so you're, okay, Commissioner Chris, you're, oh, we need a second to Commissioner Miller's amendment. Do we have a second to add the county commissioners to D4? Motion dies for lack of a second. Okay, Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I, I had pretty strong feelings in opposition to this at the beginning, and I didn't see the sense in the logic in it. But this has been an issue that's been widely But this has been an issue that's been widely discussed with staff, widely discussed out into the community, widely discussed up here, and there has been components and reasons and logics that have come forward in those discussions that have caused me to pause, stop, think, and reconsider. After learning more details of why this is important and why this is necessary at this time, I will now be voting in favor of it. And I would hope those who are here that are opposed to this, who I have known for a very long time, would not hold one single vote at one time that we may disagree on, you know, against me. But I have a job to do. I have to do what I believe is right. And after learning all of the facts and seeing the whole picture and understanding the important parts of this, I think the, the best decision is a favorable one.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Chris. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I'll, I don't think anybody's minds is going to change from anything, but I'll just add this. I do, point well taken. I thought this morning that this would make for far more costly campaigns for candidates when they had to go so broadly in the first round. But, and secondly, I do think it's a, it's a good way for people to have a more narrow field and sort and put forward in, in each category, candidates for the, the general. I think it's an important sorting tool, so I will be voting against it.
Okay, thank you all very much. We have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Higginbotham, seconded by Commissioner Hagan to approve item D four. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please record your vote.
The machine's not letting me vote.
Press the button. There you go.
All right, there we go.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioners Kemp and Miller voted no.
Okay, thank you, Mary Helen, for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
And thank you, Board members.
Thank you, Commissioner Higginbotham.
So that concludes your time certens. I assume you want to continue and complete?
Oh, okay. We can take a half hour, forty-five minute break and come back, or we can continue. I don't think we have
We don't have that much.
Much left. No, we only have, really, I think, like, four items and future issues. Four or five items.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Should we just keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. Public Works, B ten and eleven.
Good afternoon, Commissioners John Lyons, Public Works. Item B ten is to award a five-year contract to Clark Environmental Mosquito Management an amount of $4.7 million, and this is to support needed mosquito control ground spraying efforts. So this is supplemental to our staff, and there is an awarded contingency in an amount of $100,000 for purchase of additional chemicals.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Higginbotham, seconded by Commissioner Hagan to approve item B ten. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Commissioner Higginbotham? Motion carried, six to zero.
Item B eleven is to award a five-year contract to Vector Disease Control International LLC in the amount of $1.220 million, and this is for aerial spraying and supplement mosquito program.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Higginbotham, seconded by Commissioner Chris. I just want to ask you, is this enough? Because this is about mosquitoes, and they are bad right now.
So, so we have ramped up efforts. We have probably treated three times as much on the ground as we did all last year, so we're being more responsive. We're adding on to it, and we'll continue to monitor the budget, and if we need additional funds.
You'll come back to us if you get to a point where you need more.
Yeah, if we run out of money, we won't just stop.
Okay.
I can assure you that won't happen.
Yes.
The best monitoring is for you to come over to my house and just sit in the backyard?
Yes, sir.
They're big enough to carry you away.
Okay, we'll, we'll look into that.
All right.
Thank you, John. Thanks for all your hard work. So we have a motion by Commissioner Higginbotham, seconded by Commissioner Chris to approve item B ten, B eleven. And we're on B eleven.
B eleven.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And B thirteen?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Josh Bellotti, Real Estate and Facility Services. This item is a purchase and sale contract for the 3.28 acre surplus property on West Spruce Street. The property was advertised for public bid in accordance with Florida statutes, and the county received one bid for $3 million, which is above the minimum bid amount. Revenue from this sale will be deposited into the general fund, where it can be leveraged for other county needs. If you have to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. We're on B thirteen. Commissioner Higginbotham, you're really on it today. I love it. Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Higginbotham, seconded by Commissioner White to approve item B thirteen. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And that takes us to your item, Commissioner Murman, F four.
Okay, I'll make this quick. We're taking it up at the end of the meeting, so, obviously, I know everybody's anxious to kind of get out of here, but I wanted to give you a quick update on children's services. The last two years, we have been doing a complete assessment. There has been a consultant hired to do a complete assessment of children's services, not just with Hillsborough County government, but also Hillsborough County. As you know, from the newspaper reports, we've had multiple reports of children in inappropriate places, often unattended, from cars to offices, and actually, they're still in offices, but at least they're being supervised. There have been reports that have come out from the Department of Children and Families that has some very explicit recommendations in it about what they want to see change in Hillsborough County. But unfortunately for us, I think it painted a picture in Hillsborough County of how we take care of our foster children, and it hasn't always been very positive. So, we, there is a crisis, and these highly publicized events, I guess, have really elevated it. I do believe that our county government must repurpose its current philosophy and way of operating its child welfare programs to keep pace with the changing needs of children, especially our teens ages ten to seventeen that are entering care. There has been a new federal law that's been passed, the Families First Prevention Services, that requires residential group settings now meet certain specifications, which is really changing the dynamics of how residential group care programs operate. So, there is a sense of urgency. The federal legislation will take effect next year. We have the report from the Department of Children and Families that made very specific findings about how our system of foster care actually operates here. We did distribute a preliminary report to, I call ourselves, the Blue Ribbon Committee on Child Safety. It's, and we, the consultant did conduct an appraisal of the assets. I do have copies of the report I'll distribute to you all. Sorry, I couldn't get to you sooner. They are making recommendations, specific recommendations, and, and identify the current status of supports. They use, you'll see the approach and methodology. They did many interviews, geomapping. They, yes, thank you. They did surveys, many, many surveys. The interview responses range from, "The current system model doesn't work. Don't need to warehouse them anymore." Prevention service, we need more prevention services that focus, focus on keeping kids out of the system. So you can go through the report and see, part of the real issue is that when you look at the children's histories, the number of moves of children in foster care by the time they reach being a teenager can have anywhere of a range of three different placements to a height of eighty, eighty different child foster care placements. That's almost inconceivable, but it is happening. So, with that, you can go through the report. I just wanted to update you. I'll ask Mr. Merrill. He's been fully engaged on this every step of the way, as, as all of our staff has been. We do invest quite a bit of money in our children's services right now, and I think we are at a crossroads with all these things we have to do, that Hillsborough County can really be the leader, leader in the state in really implementing technology to go between these providers, decreasing the number of kids coming in care, serving more children and families, and really developing more of a prevention diversion model that would serve many, many, many more families and children in our community. So, that's kind of the outline of it. Mr. Merrill, do you have anything to add?
No, that simply will be working with consultants. We'll be bringing back to this board
Yes.
a recommended pilot program, which will probably need some initial funding to kickstart it, but that probably won't be until maybe August.
August. It will be August, yes. So I just wanted to give you a brief update and let you know we'll be bringing the full report and recommendations back to you at some point. Okay?
That just leaves two remaining items, staff reports, Head Start, G three and, G three and G four.
Hello again, Commissioners. Dr. Jenkins, seeking approval for a May monthly report. Just a little bit of statistics with the voluntary pre-K program. Average daily attendance is eighty-five percent, and we're attending at ninety percent. And so, it's going well. I can answer any questions.
Thank you. May I have a motion to receive or report? Motion by Commissioner Chris, seconded by Commissioner Hagan to accept item G three. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And G four speaks to our self-assessment, our program's self-assessment. Overall, I'm happy, overall, I'm happy with the outcomes of it. We have some opportunities for improvement. We've moved forward to hire a business solution analyst to help us with just some internal communications that piece, though. But I think our program is, is operating well. I can answer any questions.
We know, because you're a great leader.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all the hard work you do. Motion by Commissioner White to receive the report, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote, item G four.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And future issues?
Future issues, Commissioner Chris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we discussed earlier, Mr. Merrill, I'd like to ask that you look into what, if anything, could be done to strengthen safeguards with our PACE program to ensure that they're doing the most possible to highly scrutinize the vendors up front, to minimize exposure to our constituents and to the county, and also to look, work with the county attorney to bring back ideas of what we could do on the back end to significantly penalize anyone who would take advantage of our residents.
Was that already brought forth in my, in my?
Elements, yes.
Yeah.
I thought there was a different item you were going to bring back. Okay. We don't remember it. We'll figure it out. You can ask staff later. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't normally speak during future issues, but since I was out of the room when my political opponent brought up the issue regarding Film Tampa Bay, I just want to point out a couple of things real quick. Film Tampa Bay's incentives are only for film expenditures in the county. It offers a ten percent back, it's cash rebate only on money spent in the county. To qualify for a piece of it, productions must spend at least $100,000 in Hillsborough. Three local productions have qualified for the program since its 2015 inception, a film, a television series, and a commercial. They spent a total of approximately $1.17 million in Hillsborough, with the county contributing $117,000. More than half, about $630,000, was spent on salaries of cast and crew who live in Hillsborough County. The figure does not count money paid to law enforcement, fire rescue personnel, caterers, or other outsourced services working on set. The movie The Infiltrator that was referenced generated a four-to-one ROI on, for Hillsborough County's incentive package, and fiscal year to date has resulted in 108 permits and $4.6 million in industry spending, primarily in the commercial and TV sectors. Mike, you have anything to add to that, or did you, did you confirm that with, with staff?
Yes, I had staff pull some of the statistics and the background, and it's consistent with what you just described.
Mr. Chris, do you have a?
Yeah, yeah.
You figured it out?
Yeah, I figured it out. Um, I, I too, Commissioner Hagan, support advancing our film industry, whether it be for developing the commercials or for a full-featured film, because either way, it helps to promote what we have to offer here, and it helps to keep a high profile of the Tampa Bay area, most importantly, Tampa and Hillsborough County. But I do think that there are some important elements that we need to make sure are in our agreement, and one of them is, is that every possible effort needs to be made to include as much local talent and as possible, whether it be from the acting to the production side of, of what's going on. And I'd like to see staff, you know, bring back a report on providing us with the assurances that we need to know on, you know, what is in place to ensure that we're capitalizing on spending that money here at home.
Yeah, actually, I didn't get into that specifically, but one of the things my staff did provide, I'm sorry I didn't mention earlier, is that under the program you approved, in order for a film applicant to be reimbursed, the money does have to be spent in the county on services provided by Hillsborough County vendors or, or residents. So it can only be spent in, in that manner.
Well, we didn't have that answer earlier. I'm glad to see that you were able to get that between the beginning of the meeting and the end of the meeting, and that satisfies me. This, this investment has been an important one in helping to highlight what we have to offer here and growing that industry here, which needs to be done.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't get to it sooner.
Okay, any other future issues? Any other business? Seeing none, we're adjourned.